All right, why don't we go and call tonight's meeting to order? Is it ready, Susan? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call. All members of council are present, including Councilor Polling, who is with us virtually. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda with one change, moving item six up right after the consent agenda? Hearing a motion by Counselor Haugen, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public comment, is there anybody that would like to comment on anything not on the agenda or speaker's request? Mr. Rosenthal, yours was up first. Would you like to wait till the agenda item? Okay. Mr. Bacchus. Welcome, just state your name and city you live in for the record.
Robert Bacchus, living in Scappuas. Good evening, councilors and mayor. I have some quick remarks, mostly about, I recently wrote an op ed in the Spotlight. I don't know if you got a chance to read it, published Friday, you can also read it online. It's titled, "Why Can't Scappuas Have Nice Things?" It's an opinion that many others like me have, born out of frustration and disappointment. In the days following the article, I've received dozens of messages of support and little to no pushback. The op ed poses many questions, like, how is it that one of the wealthiest cities in the state, the third wealthiest according to one site, a town that is growing and plans to continue to grow, does not have a Parks and Rec Department? A city that sees about 164 rainy days a year, but still does not have any form of artificial turf for athletics or recreation? A city that borders a beautiful river but does not have developed beach access? A tight-knit community despite not having a consistent annual event or holiday festivities? Forget the pool, we don't even have an outdoor basketball court. We have two tennis courts on school grounds that seem to never have working lights. No pickleball, no rec center, no frisbee golf, the list goes on. New state-of-the-art schools seem to be popping up throughout the Willamette Valley every single year, yet our middle school was built when Hoover was president. I was able to find the exact year because it was included in 2019 article published in The Oregonian titled, "Oregon's Dirtiest and Worst-Maintained Schools As Seen By Teachers." Yes, the school district has their own problems and should be held accountable. However, it does not make the situation any easier when the city treats the schools as a de facto Parks and Rec Department, yet there's no coordination or communication between each other. People may see Scappuas as a rural, low-income community, but that is simply not the case. Some don't want Scappuas to grow, because then we will lose the values that this town is known for. However, I believe if we are not growing, then we're slowly dying. It's time to lose the apathy and the can't-do attitudes that have plagued the city for years. To paraphrase a quote from one of my favorite politicians, Robert F. Kennedy, "Some people see things as they are and ask why. Others dream of things that never were and ask why not. So I sit here asking, why not? Why not Scappuas? Like how I ended my op ed, the question is no longer where is the money? Because it's there. The question now is, where is the political will? Thank you."
Thank you. Did Brady have his hand up?
Well said.
Brady Preheim?
Yes. So I'm not certain exactly how it works. If I wanted to comment on the agenda item number five, I believe it is regarding the request for the enterprise zone, should I do that now or should I wait until that item?
Go ahead and do it now.
So I am opposed to this. The enterprise zone was created to allow this company, Cascades Tissue, to save some taxes and come into the community. They spent over $4 million by their own admission. And the offset of the tax revenue was supposed to be made up by creating local prevailing wage, actually, I think it has to be 150% of poverty, as I recall. And they haven't done it. And you will hear Mr. Vogel here telling them about, oh, it was COVID and all that. Well, we know that, number one, they make tissue. Tissue was in huge demand, and while the local plant does mainly affect due commercial tissue, they certainly wouldn't have taken much work for them to retool that to fill the shelves with toilet paper, which we all know was in huge shortage. And now here they are, after having a year of record profits, asking for the citizens of Scappuas to pay and give them a tax break. I think they should be embarrassed. It sort of follows up on the young man that was just speaking about, why don't you have nice things? It's because you're giving all your money away to corporations like Cascades Tissues, who haven't met their end of the commitment. And it's pretty simple, you meet the end of the commitment, or you don't. And if you don't, then you pay the taxes. And for a company that made, by their admission, like $670 million, asking the city of Scappuas and surrounding communities to give you $225,000 in tax breaks, I think this should be an embarrassment to them. And I urge you to say no to that request. And tell them that that's just not a wise use of your money. You can use it for things within your own city. You need the money way more than this corporation. I also find it slightly distasteful that Mr. Vogel actually gets a percentage of whatever he saves them to his own budget. I don't think that should be allowed. I think that however that system came about, I think that that is sort of, I won't say corrupt, but sort of just distasteful that he's here asking for money for a corporation and he gets a percentage of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brady. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move forward. The consent agenda is the October 18, 2021 council work session minutes and the October 18, 2021 council city council minutes. Do I have a motion? Hearing a motion from Counselor Haugen, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second by Counselor Grayson, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, new radio system.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you know, I wrote a very lengthy memo about the radio system topic. And rather than rehash everything that's in there, because it is technical and I don't want to waste time here tonight, first want to ask if there's any questions from council about what they read. And then if Chief Pritchard is willing or wanting to, I would also like to open it up to him to also talk about the memo. I know that he has had an opportunity to read it. And I think if he is willing, I think that he would give valuable context to the matter.
Any questions?
Keith? Are there specific questions or specific information you would like me to speak to? Because it's a very broad topic, and it covers many different areas.
Sure, yeah, I can key it off a little bit with a couple of points. You are aware of the federal engineering report that was completed on behalf or facilitated by the Columbia 911 Communications District. I'd like to start if, just to ask you if you have any concerns. I know that we don't have all night to talk about concerns, but just high level, if you will. And then there's a, I don't know what you want to call it, but there's a board, there's Fire Defense Board in Columbia County as well. If, I don't know what your position is on that board, but if you feel comfortable in relaying the different concerns that the Fire Defense Board has brought forth also to give our council context, I think that'd be great.
Sure. So I guess to start with, I would say that the Scappuas Fire District has received the federal engineering report. We received a draft, just like every other agency in the county. The Scappuas Fire District is also a member of the user board, which is made up of users of the system. And as such, our assessment of the current federal engineering report made it so that we could not make a decision at this moment in time as to whether or not we support any of the options. And as I say that, I need to be specific in the context of that. The options that were presented are all decent options. But as I said at the recent user board meeting, when we looked at the report, we're having a hard time comparing the difference between apples, oranges, potatoes, and onions. All very different things to talk about. And as a result, we did have questions about all sorts of aspects of the federal engineering report. The Fire District, which is also a member of the Columbia County Fire Defense Board, which is made up of all the fire chiefs in the county, we got together and we had a brief discussion and meeting on what each other's thoughts were on that federal engineering report. As you alluded, I am not in the position of the Fire Defense Board chief, so I cannot speak for all the other agencies that are a member of that group. But I can tell you that we did share a lot of the points that were brought up in the memo that was penned to the city council. The Fire Defense Board then got together with the director of the Columbia County 911 District. We had a very lengthy meeting, at which point we shared a lot of our questions, concerns, and asked for information. The Columbia County 911 Director has taken those questions, gone back to federal engineering, and we're still waiting to hear, you know, the results of a bulk of them. But what I can tell you is that there's going to be a meeting coming up where federal engineering is going to be coming back out to talk to the various users about all these questions that have been brought up.
So a few questions here. So the federal engineering report has a coverage level of 60%. Can you explain what that coverage level would do for your district? And can you also discuss if there was any coverage about the fire pagers and how you guys use the fire pagers? And what happens if your fire pager doesn't go off?
Sure, I'll take a stab at that. The 60% number, without looking at the document, I can't remember where it referenced that. There were a lot of different statistics in the federal engineering report talking about coverage of radios at the hip, as well as coverage via mobile. I will tell you that coverage is a very significant concern for our district. I'll let Chief Mark chime in if he wants to. Specifically, you know, the major transportation corridors are a concern for us. Scappuas, Vernonia Highway, certain places on Highway 30, where we see a higher-than-average call volume. We want to make sure that we're able to reach out and touch one, touch someone, so to speak. Pagers are how our volunteers are notified of an emergency. The pagers work off of tones, the tones are transmitted through the radio signal, and they basically trigger a noise that alerts the volunteers and our career staff that an emergency is occurring. At this moment in time, if we didn't have good coverage for pagers, we would be in trouble. There have been occasions where pagers have not worked, depending on where volunteers lived. But I think you could say safely that that is not something that is systemic to the Scappuas Fire District, but most agencies in the county, as well as other counties, use the same sort of system that we have. And as a result, we also have a backup plan. We use a different third-party paging service that utilizes the CAD system and sends information to our phones and our tablets. But paging is a huge component of what we do when it comes to response. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, thank you, sir. So I did get the actual coverage maps that federal engineering provided to Columbia County 911 Communications District. And the thing of it is, is that they throw maps in these engineering reports that are on an eight-and-a-half-by-11 piece of paper, and for our county, it's 656 square miles. So unless you zoom in, you just see a lot of colors, but you can't actually see the coverage levels on these different streets and roads unless you're able to zoom in. Well, I got the, what's called KMZ files that you can open in Google Earth and you can zoom down in. And what I found was there were gaps in coverage within the actual city limits, where there was no coverage at all, not even mobile. And on the recommended system, by the way, federal engineering did recommend one of the systems, it tuned in 19, about 19.5 million, and it gave 60% coverage as presented. Areas of our urban growth boundary had no coverage at all, to include mobile radio coverage. Scappuas Vernonia Highway had portions that were not covered either. So the significance of this is if there's an emergency and you have first responders responding like fire, if lifelight needs to be activated, for example, and this has happened, I've heard it myself, witnessed it, they can't activate it because they have no radio coverage. They cannot even walk up to their vehicle and call in this scenario, because that's considered the mobile radio coverage. This is a very significant issue. This is, the safety of our community is, should be, in my opinion, this council's number-one priority. It should be any council's priority. So I, when I look at this from a perspective of this being the safety of our staff, our police officers in, to include yourself and your personnel, the Fire District, and the safety of our community, I think that this is a top priority. And I think it warrants us doing our own independent study to make sure that we get the answers that we want to, that we need. I would also like to, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, to bring in the city attorney, if he has any comment on it, and also city manager Raines, if she has any comment on this as well.
Well, as you can probably guess, since I wrote my executive summary, I've been getting a lot of phone calls related to radio, which is interesting, because I really don't know much about radio. What I can, other than what I read in the 55 pages, what I can tell you is I was contacted today by folks in Clatsop County that are interested in piggybacking on this. They said that there was, if the city council chooses to do it, it's your decision, not mine. They built some new schools, and there's some new antennas, and now they have some pretty significant issues with non-coverage, or where they can hear, but they can't speak. That's how it was explained to me. They think the engineering would be really beneficial to them. They said there are areas where the coverage intersects, that might be true across the river as well. I asked if Tillamook, did they think Tillamook County might want to get into? But I guess Tillamook County is on a different sort of system that they adopted a couple of years ago. So in the event that this is a priority for council and we have the engineering work done, we're probably going to, we, I would approach the kind of whoever they are, it's mainly fire service there, and figure out exactly how that could work. The other thing that I'd say is, one of the things that I was tasked with is, is there money for this, or could there be additional money for this? So there's never a guarantee to anything, but I would tell you that I've had conversations with elected officials, and what I've learned is there are multiple tranches of ARPA funds that may be returned to the Treasury. And those fall into kind of three main categories. One is that when legislators set their priorities at the beginning of the process, we didn't have all the guidance from the US Treasury. So there were projects that seemed like they could be funded, that can't. And so that, it doesn't just go back to the person for them to reallocate, it actually goes back to Treasury for kind of a competitive process. The second is that there are ARPA funds that were made contingent upon already identified local funds being available, something like an urban renewal funding to do a match. And I'm aware of at least one instance where, whether it was through a miscommunication or something like that, that the funds that they thought would, could provide the match can't. And that was in excess of $5 million. So unless something can be done, that would be returned to the Treasury. The third, the third grouping is that some of these were contingent upon public vote to finance. So for instance, Brook County is going up for kind of a justice center, and it will take a local match, so they would have to vote on the local bonding in order to authorize that. If, if the local match, and there are a lot of jurisdictions where that's the case. If, if that local match doesn't happen because voters don't authorize it, then those funds will be returned to Treasury. Treasury, my understanding is because a lot of these were kind of public safety projects, public safety dollars, that that's probably where they would stay. In the grand scheme of things, $125,000 to $150,000 is not a tremendous amount of money, particularly compared to all of the funds that have been received by the state. So I cannot guarantee you that there could be funds to backfill this, but I would be very surprised if there were not funds, particularly if Clatsop County gets involved. Because then this really is, I mean, this is already a regional project, because it's a county with multiple impacted entities. But if then it, a second county is added to that, I think it increases, even increases the likelihood more. So that's kind of what I've learned in the last couple of weeks.
So I don't know if I have a lot to add in addition to that, but I would just simply state that, you know, after having spoken with Counselor Miller multiple times and having taken the time to read his memo, also spoken with Chief Pritchard, I just, you know, want to emphasize that, of course, I am concerned about, you know, the safety of our police officers, our first responders in general. I do hope that we can do whatever we can to make sure that they have the best coverage possible, so that they are safe. It is really important, of course, and it does concern me, particularly, you know, with our staff, that they might be put in harm's way because of some kind of coverage issue. So that would be my primary concern, and just simply making sure we get, you know, the best outcome possible for our first responders.
Sir Haugen?
Well, first, I'd like again, thanks Counselor Miller for bringing this to our attention. I mean, I would address this question to Alex, because you're familiar with the county, oddly enough. Now, this is clearly a serious issue, but it's systemic. It extends to Clatsop County and Tillamook, parts of Washington County. And so we should be all on the same page here. So every community in Columbia County in particular, and the county in general, should be participating in this. And, you know, I don't understand quite why it's the role of Scappuas to push this through. And because, and so, Alex, could you kind of give us a sense of the county's perspective on this?
Scappuas has leaders who care and are willing to take the task, the things that need to be taken to task to get them fixed. Does that answer your question?
Well, by implication, that would mean that other communities don't care?
We all saw the report that came out of CCOM. And Scappuas and the Scappuas Fire District have looked at it and said, this is not adequate. And, or certain counselors and certain staff members have said, this is not adequate, and we don't feel this meets the need, and it's not answering the questions that we want answered. So this council and the Scappuas Fire District have come together to look at options, find an adequate system to move us forward. I can't speak to why Vernonia, Clatska, and I rein ear or not at the table, or where the county is. I know the county has representation at CCOM, and that could be part of the reason the waters are so muddy. But again, that's speculation on my part and is not fact.
Just a clarification, the Fire District is here working as a partner with the city, but we're not here to drive any alternative changes at this moment in time, because we have not been asked to do so. So again, we are here as a partner.
Okay, a quick follow-up question. So you've indicated there's a next meeting coming up for fire officials in the Columbia County. Do you have a date for that?
You know, sir, at this moment, I don't know the date. I'm pretty sure if I reached out to the 911 Director, he would be able to provide us with that. I know they're looking at doing it in the next two months. But soon as we get that, the city will know, because the Police Department is also a member of the user board. And this is the group that helps push the decisions to the 911 District as to what we want and what we need.
Yeah, it seems like this is kind of, the urgency of this matter, you know, given the ARPA funds and so forth, and dispense, you know, disbursements, that, that, you know, just kind of from a common sense level, that everybody should be on the same page here.
Yeah, I think you're spot on in that assessment. I would say that the majority of the entities in Columbia County are very concerned about communication. If we, we look at every major disaster, or every fatality type of incident that occurs, whether it's law enforcement, fire, EMS, everything can kind of be pointed back to communication. And, and I would say the Fire District is as concerned about this as the city is showing their concern with this discussion this evening. But the, the important thing moving forward is that this, you know, the severity or the challenge that we're faced with is something that you can't rush. Counselor Miller will tell you that this process started several years ago. I think it actually started before I got hired. You know, 10 years ago, they've been talking about this. But five years ago, they started looking at different radio systems, and now we're at the step where I think the 911 District is going to be making a decision. And I know they have not made a decision at this moment in time. And I heard that from a board member, actually, two board members that I've talked to in the last week.
I just have a logistical question. I'm not quite sure if this is for Chief Davis or Chief Pritchard or Marks, but maybe even Counselor Miller. I'm just kind of breaking down a couple of things in terms of our suggested motion tonight, or what sort of action council is called to take moving forward. So a couple of things I see here is that an engineering study needs to take place. And that our city manager is going to hire that engineering team to complete that evaluation of the radio system. Correct? I'm not doubting that she's not capable of that. Is it our, is it her or our responsibility to find an engineering team to complete that evaluation? Is that within our purview, or yours, or your wherewithal to know? You know, I'm not, again, downplaying your level of skill, I completely trust you in all matters. But again, we're talking about this being a massive county-wide sort of problem here. And then the second thing is that that's going to cost between $125,000 and $150,000. And council is being asked tonight to use our ARPA funds to do that. Again, just a question for the room, this is a county issue, not a city issue. I am not playing the card that it's their deal, not ours. This is completely our deal. I'm happy to take ownership over this issue. I guess I just have some open-ended questions for the leaders in the room. I don't sit on other boards or interact with other people of your position in the county. I appreciate Alex's comments about, you know, we get stuff done, and that, we should feel proud about that. But just a couple of those things, so I don't...
So we would go up for an RFP for engineering services, STOP, and I do those very, quite regularly. Alex and I have spent quite a bit of time discussing, our Alex and I have spent quite a bit of time discussing this, haven't discussed it with the other Alex. We, our goal would be to find the money for this. And as part of that, when you're putting together kind of a financial package, when you're going to other jurisdictions that have funds, or when you're going to the state that has funds, one of the things that they really care about is whether or not this will happen. And so the reason that we structured in this manner is because we would be able to say, we're, if engineering firms that might compete for this, you will have the work to do. You will, there will be a way to pay for it. That might come from the state, that might come from partner organizations, maybe some of it would come from you. I mean, we have to be prepared that maybe all of it would come from you, because that would be what you're authorizing. But the key is that we would be, we would be trying to find that money other places. But the key is that we would be, we would be trying to find that money other places. Will you end up spending some ARPA funds on this? I can't say whether you can or not. I am quite familiar with a lot of the projects under these states' ARPA program. When you think about first responder safety, and I wrote a short memo about how critically important I think that is, to me, that's at the very top of the list. Fact that it's countywide, the fact that all of that, to the extent that Clatsop County gets involved in it, sure sounds like that's going to happen. I just don't. It's hard for me to imagine that we wouldn't be able to find the money and we would end up using yours. But that is one outcome, and so I guess that's what I can tell you.
Well, I would add too that, to, to your point, no, this wouldn't typically maybe fall within, you know, our general purview or something we would normally, maybe under different circumstances, pursue. I think the general feeling from Councilor Miller was that perhaps this might be the only way to push this forward in a timely manner. However, you know, no, to your point, you are correct. This is not normally something we would do. Yes, we do have a lot of experience hiring engineering teams for various projects in terms of the actual process to bring someone on board and move forward. That part I'm completely comfortable with. The subject matter is not something we typically deal with, no, to your point.
Ms. Mayor?
Good question. Chief?
Yes, it's like Chief said, I'm very concerned with that report. However, like the coverage and we just can't compare what's out there with the four different systems because the way they use the different towers and the way, it just, a lot of stuff I don't understand, but you could tell that it just doesn't make sense. I am concerned, though, if we do hire this firm, will the nine-one-one board even look at this? Right? Will they give us access? Will, will that be something that we could even do? Is there another way we can maybe leverage the nine-one-one board to maybe have federal engineering? Look at their report and use that so we get a different apples to apples or apples to oranges? I don't know, that's, it's something we've got to think about. We could spend a lot of money and that may not even, we have fifty-two thousand people in Columbia County, so this would be affecting everyone. I haven't had the time to reach out to the sheriff or other chiefs to find out their opinion. Fortunately, I wasn't able to be at the board meeting on Tuesday because I was out of town. So I know there's, there's a lot of things. I do know that I learned that decisions weren't made and there is a lot of questions, so.
Where is? So I, that's, kind of falls off of my question. And kind of on Council President Grayson's question, does us hiring a firm get us anywhere? Or, or can, is there still the possibility that we can say, we have these ARPA funds or we think we can get even more money so that nine-one-one can go and do a more in-depth study?
You mean in terms of actually just getting the funds together and then going to nine-one-one and saying, you know, we have these additional funds, please do this study?
Yeah, let's do more in-depth, let's make sure that we're comparing the apples and apples and.
Or don't move forward with a decision, at least stop.
I, I don't know that that conversation's been had, okay.
You can finish your, your.
No, no.
All eight.
Go ahead, I was done.
Well, I, I was just going to say, you know, to go back to Councilmember Grayson's question, I, I think this is an important opportunity to show the first responders that their safety is, is of, you know, utmost concern of the community that we're here to protect. But based on what we've done tonight already by starting a meeting at six o'clock in collaboration with the council, it might be prudent to also take the same steps with the nine-one-one district in the spirit of collaboration, moving forward to where through some sort of partnership, you know, the city could help spearhead finding funds, but then work those funds through the nine-one-one district if they were willing, you know, to, to help this out. Because as you pointed out, this is a county issue. It is a city issue, it's a Fire District issue, it's a Fire Defense Board issue. But in order for communication to be successful, we need to be collaborative in our approach.
Councilor Miller?
So I, I do keep hearing that this is a county issue and I do agree that it is, but we're here to talk about the city of SCAPUS. And whether it be a county issue or isolated to the city of SCAPUS, it still affects our citizens within our city limits, our first responders. So to preface it that it's a county issue, yeah, that's true. But does that really change anything about the safety aspect to our community? I don't think that it does. The reason that this got to where it's at was because, and I was hoping not to go down that, because it's kind of a rabbit hole and we don't have a lot of time, was because the nine-one-one director went and said, here's four systems you can look at. You can only look at these four systems. That's not how an engineering study is done with radio systems. For those that don't know, I have extensive history with communication systems and I defer too often on this subject matter. So the problem is, is that when you see that they spent seventy-three thousand dollars on a report that they were told that they can only look at four things and none of them are appropriate for this community. And I want to remind everybody in this room too, that we are going to be asked to support, well, nineteen point five million was for a ten-year lookout and it didn't, that's a twenty-year thing. So there's a bunch of problems with the estimates, it's going to be a lot more than that. So what this council needs to be, we need information, that's what the point of this was. We need information, we need to be able to get our independent information from a reliable source that we can count on. That was the point of this request. We cannot control our, the information that we're going to get from an engineer if it's coming from a third party. So at the end of the day, if this does not get approved, what we have to be comfortable with is deferring that service to somebody else, trusting them, and then also getting behind their multimillion-dollar request for a twenty-year system that as of right now only gives a first responder sixty percent and is woefully deficient in their coverage. So that's the way that I look at it, is that I do not have information and I, I, based on what I've seen, I don't think we'll ever get it unless we go out and get the information ourselves.
So just, just to clarify, whatever system that they choose, that's what we use. We are not able to pick our own system and use what we want. We all fall under what they choose in their umbrella, correct? It's not like our city of SCAPUS can have its own radio system separate from them, you know.
Right, they wouldn't, I, I mean, technically you could, but.
I think we could, but I don't think the cost, it would cost the city so much. We could always potentially partner with different, say, BoAC or WACA, but that would take a lot of discussions and even if they're even willing to do that. And then that would put SCAPUS in an island away from the rest of our first responders, so.
So with that, that is why I am not prepared to vote on this matter tonight because it seems like there is someone out there making decisions that we don't have control over. Nine-one-one tomorrow could, you know, or whenever, pick a system before we get the report on what should happen. So I feel like before, I mean, like I am all in favor of, of, of doing this work, but I'm not going to sign it off on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or hire a company when we're in the middle of doing work and they've made their decision. I feel like we're missing a step here and that is talking with nine-one-one communications. Like they have not been in front of us. I don't know, like, I haven't been to, I know he's been to a meeting, but like as a collective group or as a city, we haven't said like, I don't know, maybe we have. Have we told them, we're doing this, please stop everything and hold? Because I can't trust that that's going to happen and then we're just spending a bunch of money and then they already made their choice. That, that to me doesn't seem fiscally responsible. Whereas at the heart of it, I completely agree with what we're talking about here tonight. I just, I feel like we're missing a step.
Yeah, in, in my memo, I have reached out to every one of their board members and their executive director, and they have not responded at all. So that's also what got us this place. To that end, too, the Fire Defense Board posed numerous questions, as Chief Pritchard said, that were in line with my memo and they didn't have answers except. I sat on the advisory board meeting the other day and on it, and the, the executive director was sitting there trying to get him to tell him which of the four systems they wanted to go with. And they were all like, we don't have the information we need. And so it's a common theme to where they're just trying to push towards, I, it's very baffling to me, to be honest.
I, I don't know if you have any insight or a help with this decision that we're supposed to make tonight, but I mean, this is a lot of money, right? And I, I don't know these people personally or the decisions they make. I mean, are we, should we ask them to sign something that, like?
Chief?
It's, it's a, it's a complicated thing to answer. I, I, again, I, I will say or reiterate what I said at the very beginning. A lot of the things that were identified by Councilor, Councilor Miller have also been identified by the Fire Defense Board. And I think if your feeling is that you don't have enough information to make a decision tonight, similar to us not having enough information to actually pick a radio system, then caution is not a bad thing. The radio system is not what we expect it to be right now. It's been that way for many years. Does that make it right for us to continue going down this path where we could be in harm's way? Probably not, but we don't have the money. I can't push another government entity into doing something when we're a partner with that government entity. So I am not going to take a, a side on what the city should do unless my, my bosses tell me I need to take a side and we're sitting here. So they can direct me to do that. But I think, I think the, the, the best I can do is, is say we echo the same concerns that were identified in, in Councilor Miller's memo to the, to the council, but.
Is there a deadline for you guys to choose one of the four? Like I just don't even know how much time we have here, I mean.
Well, I, I can tell you that this is not something that's going to happen overnight. If the nine-one-one district decides that they're going to pick one system over the other, they're going to have to go to the voters and say, we need anywhere between twenty to forty million dollars. That is a significant amount of money. And they're going to need all the partner agencies to be on board in order for them to be successful. And I would assume that their goal is to have everybody on board when they do make a final decision. I think Councilor Miller would agree with me. No decision was made at the last User Board meeting. And talking with two of the board members, they are not ready to make a decision yet at this time. So I think these conversations are healthy. We need to continue this dialogue. We need to work together as partners, city and Fire District, in making sure that our voices are heard with the nine-one-one district, you know, through the, the channels that we are afforded. And if we miss an opportunity at a meeting, we have every right to go to one of the monthly board meetings and voice our concerns.
Councilor?
First of all, I'd like to thank Councilor Miller for bringing this to our attention because I think it's a real important issue that wouldn't have, we wouldn't be aware of if this hadn't happened. So thank you. I'm just wondering, where is nine-one-one, where are the nine-one-one people? Why aren't they here? I know they're aware this is going on. Is there a reason why they haven't weighed in on this?
Well, I, I can tell you, I'm pretty sure they're listening. They've called into this meeting.
One of those up there, maybe?
It is.
Without poking the bear again, did you invite them?
I didn't invite them, no, but I, I know they're aware of this and if they're up there, maybe they can chime in. But I just like to, I'm not saying this critically of them, I just don't, this doesn't quite, things aren't like, Councilor Grayson said, they're not quite adding up here. It seems like there's a piece of information missing.
I have a question for Councilor Miller. Do you feel, it, it seems like you've reached out in your personal capacity for information. Is there, have we as a, a city reached out to communicate with them? Not, not through Councilor Miller, but.
I reached out at one point simply to get some documents. I received those in a timely manner and then, and then forwarded them to Councilor Miller. I haven't had a lot of contact me personally with them beyond that. It was on the list of agencies you all wanted to see at some point, just through these meetings you've been having. So that was actually one of the next people on the list actually to contact for that, just as it so happens. And then, but, but beyond that, no, there hasn't been a lot of communication.
Do we feel our professional opinion that we need to have them in front of us at our next session?
So we're, we are starting to get requests from people or we're starting to get information that I would say is impact SCAPUS and is SCAPUS-adjacent. Some of it, and it's going to, it's going to, it will likely continue to happen. And I think the reason is because you as a city councillor are seen as a city council that is willing to take action. I'm aware of another issue that probably will involve engineering, which involves the Drainage District, which is, you know, they brought us maps and those maps were not consistent with the maps from a few years ago. And we've reached out to their engineer to get information. And that information has been less forthcoming than we would have hoped. And that we may be in a position in a couple of weeks where we're coming in front of you and saying, in order to make sure that these maps are correct, in order to protect the long-term economic best interests of this city and the county, we might have to get our own engineering and make sure that those maps are correct. And if they're not correct, then, or if they're competing opinions and use the council, we need to decide what to adopt. The reason I believe that we're getting these phone calls is the same reason that this is in front of you. That there are people that say the way this has always worked is the way that it can continue to work. And then there are people that say, maybe it doesn't have to work that way, maybe there's something else. I'll just be completely candid, Councilor Miller is someone who says, maybe we shouldn't do what's always worked. Maybe we should protect, maybe we should prioritize protecting people. And he went through a years, I mean, I've read all the stuff and you guys pay me a flat fee per month. So don't think that I'm, don't think that I'm spending my weekends reading all of his various, there's a lot, I know a lot about, a lot more about Columbia County than I knew months ago. So I, I think that Councilor Miller is someone who has said, this is what I believe and why don't you guys do it? And then had people say to him, no, or what we're going to do was always worked. And then I think that he has taken far more steps than most people who had confronted a problem in order to try to arrive at a solution. And I think that one of the things that, when I first started reading this stuff and trying to figure out what was going on, I said to Alex, what if he's not wrong? What if he's not wrong about all this? Because all these people are saying he's wrong and what if he's not? And as we've read more and more and I've seen more and more and we are getting phone calls from all these people saying, why don't you stand up? What I've realized from this and, and from other similar situations, other jurisdictions is there has to be the first person to stand up. And that's the part that's the hardest, is, is there a member of, whether it's a council or another organization, willing to say, no, this won't work for me? And then that makes it easier for the second person and that makes it easier for the third person. And maybe everyone can get on the same page. And I'm not saying that is going to happen in this instance, but I believe that the more that you as a city council make a decision like that, the more of these SCAPUS-adjacent issues are going to come in front of you because there are a lot of people looking for leaders and you've been identified as one, as one of the people in the county. And I'm sure there are many leaders in this county. So I'm not an expert in radio. I do believe that in order to solve the solution long-term, it will require engineering that has been done to say, how do we solve this problem? How do we get to ninety-five percent coverage? Uh, it doesn't mean need to be you to do that. I don't know that it does. Doesn't need to be your money. I don't know that it does. But I also don't know that it doesn't. And so I think that anytime you're coordinating with other jurisdictions, being a good partner is extremely important. I also think that solving the problem once and for all may be how you're the best partner to a lot of organizations that for various reasons might not feel like they can do it themselves.
I don't disagree with one thing you just said. And, and I am holding on to the word partner. And I think that we're having a conversation about someone that we've never had a conversation with. And that is the 911 Communications District. And so I think that doesn't reflect well that we are making choices about their actions when we haven't sat down at the table with them. I think that's my point.
Chief.
I apologize. I have bedtime duties. And I have to excuse myself.
Go ahead. Thank you very much. Counselor Hoggan.
You know, I, I think the common sense thing here to do would be to, uh, this is an issue we have, we have to deal with it. We can't ignore it. Uh, but, uh, you know, as the, as Chief Pritchard noted, uh, you can't rush this stuff. Um, and so we, we need to be deliberate and diligent in the process. So, uh, meeting, meeting with the 911, uh, folks, uh, and having a work session with them and hopefully including the fire district or districts, um, and, uh, the county sheriff in particular, I think would be very productive. And so that would, what I would suggest is our next step is we have a work session as soon as possible, you know, it, to, to do that. Uh, if the next meeting works, that'd be great. That'd be my suggestion.
I second it. Counselor Hoggan has said.
Uh, so Counselor Miller, I, I thank you for your time and efforts and what you've presented to us. Um, I'm very much oriented in safety first. When I think about those that serve our community, they should be the ones that are the, I mean, as much of a, um, as much resources available to them as possible, that would give us the best safety to provide our community. I do agree that Chief Pritchard had indicated, we as leaders need to be collaborative in that nature. So I think that there are conversations and dialogue that needs to take place. But I also agree that we, as a community, can be a leader on this particular topic because I think it actually impacts us greatly compared to a vast majority of the regu-, uh, rest of the geography of the county or the district. And so I agree that, uh, we should take the next step of having conversations through a work session with, uh, representatives from the district. And that hopefully collaboratively, we can identify what that need is to help get us over this barrier. To know that scapoose is leading that charge really makes me feel as though, yes, people are looking to us. And so I want to make sure that we are taking the str-, the steps in the right direction and not overstepping certain aspects of that process. So I am in full support of those next conversations. And also I am in support of if there are dollars that we have that we, and they are, you know, interested in moving forward with another engineering study, that we take the lead on those particular conversations and the funding mechanisms to provide that. So with that, I would like to have the, uh, opportunity to speak with the 911 leadership and hopefully we can identify what those next steps would be from there.
Uh, thanks, Brandon. Um, so I do want to point out one thing, and that is in my memo, is that there were two emails. The first one that went out to Executive Fletcher, uh, Executive Director Mike Fletcher, that specifically said that this commit, that this council appointed me as a 911 liaison. He chose not to respond to that email. I sent him a follow-up email. He chose not to respond to that email. This behavior is consistent with what he's done with the Fire Defense Board, too. I also sent an email to multiple of their board of directors who also did not respond for whatever reason. If we can get them to sit down and talk to us about the way that, um, it's being illustrated here, then by all means, I think we should do that. But their behavior so far has not illustrated that they are willing to do that. And that is pathetic, in my opinion, to be candid. So that's why we got to where we're at tonight.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Um, so I move that council authorize City Manager Rains to make contact and set up a meeting with 911 Communications District as soon as possible.
Hearing a motion by Council President Grayson, is there a second?
I second it.
Any second, any discussion about the motion? I, I would also like to include the county sheriff, um, and, uh, other vested interest in this process. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Old business. Fire board people are more than welcome to stay or go.
Thank you, but I have a bedtime duty.
Yeah, totally. Bedtime duty, yeah. It doesn't work for me, though.
My circus.
Yeah, it's my circus.
All right, old business. Purchase of holiday decorations, Mr. Sukow.
Your counsel, good evening. So at the last council meeting, there was a question posed to council whether there was interest in purchasing holiday decorations uh, to be used throughout the community. Um, sounded as if there was interest, but the council requested more information on this topic. I have put together some more information. It should be in your packets. Uh, we also, um, as part of those requests, seeked, um, other fu-, funding sources, which, um, City Manager Rains has identified some for that, and we've reduced the ask. And if you want to go through your packets, talk about different features and things, um, what my recommendation to council is that we look to do banners. Along the highway, there's 32 locations of banners can be installed. They were utilized for the centennial. We are recommending maybe we do holiday banners of such of your choice, uh, from these, those locations. Other things of interest that are affordable for us is red bows represented on, there are a lot of information here.
I think it's page 96 of our packet.
It is.
The last page.
What I was thinking with those is we could put those on the globe lights around City Hall and across the street, down to the Watts House, things like that, and any other locations that you recommend. But at the moment, to stay within reasonable amount of money, 5,000 was mentioned last week. This lands at about 4,200 to do the 32 banners for of the those. I do have additional pricing if there was anything in your packet, um, that you have interest in. I don't know if that's something you guys want to chat about, or if you know what you want, or just want to questions. This is just an open discussion.
Counselor Miller.
Dave, I have a question. Uh, what is the life expectancy on these decorations?
Well, as of right now, nothing is lighted. Assuming that a banner is taken care of. Is it the banners that you're referring to, or?
Well, the, it, both. I mean, the banners and the bows. I mean, I, I, it would look different to me if you were spending $4,200 on things that are gonna last one season opposed to, um.
Well, I would anticipate 10 plus years.
Okay.
Oh, come on. You've been to an old town and the decorations look like they've been there for decades.
These are not made the way they used to be made.
That's true.
I, I would build on that. Specifically inquired to see if there was a manufacturer's warrant.
Build in on that.
Question.
Dave, when would we put them out and when would we pull them in? So they're out for about a month?
Yeah. So what we would try to do is align with the community clubs installation, which happened at the end of November. Would run through the duration. Now, if you choose some that have the snow, you know, kind of theme, it's your call. We could leave them through February or something, just to kind of stay with that. It's really, this is open for your choices. I have no preference on that. But in theory, one month. Obviously the holiday.
I noticed on some of the print designs that, that customize with the city name, is that an additional cost or was that taken into consideration?
That's included in it. They're gonna stencil it up no matter what. There is a $60 fee for each different design that you do for them to do, work up the artwork. So keep that in mind as you choose how many you would want.
Oh, you're suggesting maybe like every other one is a different.
It could be every other. I would, me, I'd pick like four and have eight print des-, or four different designs.
I'm over here trying to fit, pick my top favorite one. Yeah.
I don't go shopping until the day after Thanksgiving.
What's your lead time on shipping?
They can get them here by the end of the month if we were.
Uh, so Dave, can, can we, can we incorporate some, some exotic stuff like importing our, our, our beautiful logo, uh, into this?
Question was not asked, but I can truly ask it.
You know, that, we've got a marvelous new logo, and that, that'd be nice if we could somehow incorporate that into the Christmas E U.
I didn't ask them that question. This was, I mean, this is their catalog type stuff. And like I said, they put in your city name. Logo could be. Um, I would guess that scapoose could be themed with any font you might want, but.
Mm-hmm.
If, if, if that was an option, that'd be cool.
All right, counsel, what do you want to do?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
So I think, I just want to understand the lens of everyone as they look at this. When I first looked at it, I thought, oh, one, one banner. So I was trying to just look through the one. And I was making the assumption that not everyone celebrates the holiday of Christmas, but that there is a general idea of a holiday season and that people have different celebrations within that. And that was my lens. So what I was circling did not include a Christmas tree or ornaments or stockings. It was rather the ones with like snowflakes that said, welcome to scapoose. Um.
And the snowflakes are actually something that's, um, can be very generic and utilized on all fronts for us. If, if you look at the dazzle, it would be page 93. There's a, a large snowflake. Those could be attached in the future to light poles throughout the city. And then we could go with a snowflake themed banner highway. Um, but if you wanted to build off of snowflakes, just for the winter, you know, season and leave that through February or something, that is completely.
I'm not completely in favor of leaving it up for two months just for wear and tear, but I like the generic idea of a, of a snowflake or, um, something that maybe doesn't imply that it's necessarily just Christmas. And it can stay up through New Year's. And if we don't get someone to take them down in time, it's not totally tacky.
Page 87 has a lot of generic just.
Good, Counselor Miller.
Do we know what the lead time's gonna be on these?
Banners.
Oh, sorry.
If, if ordered this week, would make it here by the end of the month.
Okay. And the community club, have you, there's been any collaboration with the community club to make sure that the declarations and everything?
Yeah, well, they ordered attendance, yes. At our last meeting, they've talking about now. As far as like aligning them, haven't specifically done that because this is you guys to choose team if you want to align it. I think that there is, is I guess, I'm not sure what you're trying to there.
Uh, well, I don't have a really good, um, way of articulating. I'm just trying to say that, uh, we make sure that the declarations, for lack of a better word, compatible with one another. I don't.
I mean, I would say that they definitely lean more towards the Christmas, Santa, kind of a, and which is not like I'm not in favor of, but just. And I don't think that any of these would clash. I mean, a snowflake with a, I don't know. That's just my on the scene.
I wouldn't say totally branding, but I mean, you're just kind of picking a winner with years to come.
So in your opinion, if you're thinking multiples, like maybe one is like the welcome to scapoose, and then the other one is like an image. And another one, you know, like.
That could very well be done.
Each one doesn't need to say welcome to scapoose with a different image on it, you know?
Doing welcome and you want
I would like multiple of them, and then in between be like more of just an image. They don't all have to say, you know, it's like the welcome to scapoose one with the snowflakes, and then the next one is the generic winter.
Yeah, on page 88, you'll see a few that say welcome to. What about happy? Like D440.
The tree.
91. 40 is very universal.
Do we have a preference on red or blue?
About every other. Red, one blue, one red, one blue.
So then.
Pops out.
Um.
I do have to say in conjunction with our logo, red and blue is.
Yeah, for sure.
Right there in line, so.
I would agree with President Counsel Grayson's comments in regards to making this as inclusive as possible. Um, think, yes, Christmas is well celebrated within our community. Um, but I think being mindful of the holiday season uh, would be my preferred way of moving forward with the purchase of these. Really like D518 on page 88 with the welcome to with scapoose. Uh, City Manager Rains, do we have a font that is specifically to scapoose that we utilize in our branding?
I mean, we do have the specific font we've used for, um, you know, you could look at our, our actual brand and business cards and whatnot. Um, I don't, you had not actually specifically asked them about that.
I guess that would be my question to you. Is that a deal breaker? If I pose it and they say, you know, this is what you get, um, or if, if we could present something, we surely would. They say that's an option. But which, which banner were you looking at?
Was that D518?
518, winter flakes.
On 88.
Okay, gotcha.
Unless the partial cursive font makes it too busy. I, I'd like to see stuff like this before I make a call. So it's hard, Dave, but I know that the time around is really tight, and we'd like to get this all kind of launched at the same time. I don't have any concerns with the dollar quest of $5,000. I think amount of traffic that we know when it comes to the Riverlight Show that folks are heading out towards Columbia City, we would like to show our, uh, you know, our, our festive nature here in scapoose. It definitely helps build some, uh, camaraderie and excitement around this time of year. Makes us look like we're on the map. I also know that branding is always difficult.
The other thing is you can consider is there are 32 locations available. That also doesn't mean you have to use every one of those out there. Um, the banners are $115 apiece. Or after that, if we reduce, it goes up nominally, I think, $20 apiece. You can reduce that. You don't have to be on every single one.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Instead, it's, but. Josh, go ahead.
Um, I was just gonna say, I wanted to also concur with, uh, Counsel President Grayson. I think being, uh, inclusive of everybody uh, is, is the key. Uh, on the second note, um, I also want to stiration what we want this to look like, that this is kind of our starting point and that everything kind of, uh, definitely, uh, comes together in the, the long-term vision of what that, you know, season looks, or what that looks like. So, um, I think we go with something that's a little more standard, like the, the snowflakes. And, uh, I think it's a good direction to start.
I, I, I like the idea of having more seasonal than, than Christmas. And I think it's gonna be difficult for, for us to kind of, at this point in time to pull this together. Could we meet, have one or two people from the council that would work with Dave like tomorrow to, uh, nail this down? We've got sort of a theme we're agreeing to, it seems to me, and, uh, make it more seasonal and, uh, uh, and, and less Christmasy. What I like about that primarily is that you don't have to take them down right today after Christmas. And we're, we're still okay. They can be up for a while. So, uh.
I would agree.
So I, I don't sure we're gonna have a real good way to make this decision tonight between the seven of us, but if we could have a couple of counselors willing to meet with Dave tomorrow, uh, pull this all together and the rest of us trust what they do, uh, might be a way to expedite this process.
Yeah, because we could spend all evening discussing banners. And I think that, are there two council members? Dave, do you have time tomorrow?
Yeah. We can squeeze it in.
Are there two council members that would be interested in meeting with Dave and selecting? Are there two council members that would be interested in meeting with Dave and selecting?
You can do it. Can I just make one comment? Maybe that might move us along. We had talked about two colors. We have blue. We want it generic. If you can go to page ninety-two, which is page fifteen. There's a red one that just has one large red snowflake. So we talked about red and blue and we talked about snowflakes. So one is blue with snowflake says welcome to scappus. Then the next banner is this red one, BS five zero three R. One large snowflake. Okay, I see one thumbs up. It's two for me.
I'm good with it.
Think I'm not legal, we probably have to defer to over here, but my guess is if you guys just have a motion, it's approved tonight of what you wanna do and then working with where the selected council members are. Fine on my end, so.
Doesn't really have to be two, could be one too, so.
Whatever you choose.
So trust the council president.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
Like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I would move that council authorize city manager reins and staff to purchase thirty-two holiday banner decorations be used within the community with the support of Council President Grayson in the decision-making which banner.
Mouthful.
Hearing a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hoggan. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to see in that if the community, community club is available or someone from the Watts house is available to meet with that group, that would be a good input for them to have as well. So uh, that doesn't have to be part of the motion, but I think it'd be nice to invite them to whatever meeting is set up.
Okay. Can we do that, Dave? All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, ordinance number eight nine seven amendments to municipal code, chapter two point zero four, council meetings. Uh, Mr. Watts, were we reopening the, or did?
You had, you had actually had us go back and make some additional items, bring them back. So this kind of represents version four point O or version five point O of this. Um, and this will be the first reading.
Okay. There any questions by council? Do I have a motion? Counselor Hoggan.
Uh, I move that city council approve ordinance number eight nine seven, thus implementing amendments in municipal code two point zero fourth council rule.
Hearing a motion by Counselor Hoggan to approve ordinance number eight nine seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Ordinance number eight nine seven, ordinance of the city of scappus, amending scappus municipal code two point zero four, regulating council rules is on first reading. We'll come back at our next regularly scheduled council meeting for second reading and discussion and approval. New business. Mr. Jensen has been waiting here so patiently. We can get the rail questions answered. Rail study update. Mr. Jensen.
So I'm Scott Jensen from the Port of Columbia County in this particular case. Um, I wanted to talk about the rail study, uh, the Columbia County Rail Safety and Mobility Study. Uh, this was to look at the different crossings throughout the county. Um, this was a, actually a really innovative public-private partnership. Most every city, the county, multiple private businesses have all contributed to this. Uh, the first phase was fifty percent public and private. I, it was really cool. Um, anyway, we know that we have a rail line. It's not well understood. Traffic planning, you know, so there's a rail line, but there's no uh discussion of wait times or anything, like it just doesn't figure into standard traffic planning. And we know that most of the employment lands are opposite the highway from, go across the rail. So this is a economic development and it's definitely a safety issue with so many schools being so close to the rail line and the highway. So, um, got together a bunch of people. We started back in January of twenty twenty. We did stakeholder interviews, did some uh initial evaluations of crossing. We did, you know, the math piece of it. And we were just about to set it dates for our public engagement in March of twenty twenty and that didn't happen. So we put the project on pause for a while and had to uh find some other additional funding. Uh, port uh has been successful getting a state grant to help with funding the second phase of this. And um, so we're starting right off with public engagement and that's really why it was important to be here today. We have put up the existing conditions memo at, on the port website. We will be putting a survey up here this week. And we have a public Q and A session scheduled for Tuesday, November sixteenth at seven. That's gonna be a virtual meeting. We'll have a consultant engineer available there so we can answer any technical questions and we're gonna want, wanna get feedback um, in the public. Now, we know that uh High School Way and Highway thirty, that's a good example of a crossing that if you just look at it, there's nothing seems specifically special about it, but local, but locally, we know that the buses are trying to cross the tracks there. That's a very slow process for kind of twenty minutes in the morning and twenty minutes in the afternoon. So we want to find out that kind of information that just doesn't show up in kind of the basic look. That's the, I was asked to be brief. I think that's about as brief as I can make it. Happy to entertain any questions or not at your pleasure.
Mayor, Councilor Soski.
Um, Scott, you said that there was a public meeting or work session that's coming up, correct?
Yes, that, it's gonna be a virtual public Q and A session uh on Tuesday, November sixteenth at seven PM. And we'll be uh publicizing that on social media. Um, we'll be sending this to all the cities, so, and hope they will also publish it. Trying to get a bust uh public engagement as robust as we can with, you know, conditions the way they are.
What time did you say that was taking place?
Seven PM.
Seven PM, thank you. Yeah, and I would just ask that city staff please uh that information and promote it and through our social media outlets or even, I guess it's too late for the newsletter, but having that information available would be greatly appreciated. Scott, I appreciate you taking the time. Were there, was there any documents that we were supposed to have on the study report? It's just a, it's just an update.
I was asked to keep it brief.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions?
I have other questions. Uh, Scott, it's real important to get the word out, as you know, in that meeting, cuz I see that as a key component and social media is good, uh, but I think it's gonna take uh more than that. And I'm not sure how you plan to do that. It's a difficult thing, I understand, but you know, maybe getting something in the newspaper, uh, newspapers that is, you know, people draw to their attention, uh, but I do, people have opinions on that and it, and uh they're gonna find out after the meeting that you had a meeting and say, well, I didn't know anything about it. It's gonna happen anyway, but the fewer those, uh, the better.
We are planning on putting some, uh, something in the papers to advertise this. Um, and hopefully just getting it out. Uh, I'm gonna be in Platscanai on Wednesday doing this exact same thing. Kind of get the word out and then, you know, this is part of helping the word of mouth, we kind of seed it at everywhere we can.
And that, that's good, but the word of mouth, like going to this meeting here, doesn't go very far. Even if each of us told a few people, it's not, uh, how, a percentage of those that would show up. You know, I'm thinking that maybe uh doing something, uh, would, wouldn't it be possible to talk to newspaper because getting more of a feature article on the upcoming meeting? Uh, so people know it's coming rather than just a little piece in the newspaper saying it's going to be here, but actually a feature article that they could say, your chance to get, give input and uh, and that they, they write it up and uh, and and publicize it for us. It's just a thought, but my concern is you're gonna have that meeting and, and not that many people show up.
Well, this isn't the only opportunity for public input. This is, you know, trying to kind of wrap up the existing conditions with those, that local knowledge and get to the, with the crossings in three different tiers. Um, and so we want to get that settled and then we start looking at what are options, you know, what are some ideas to address some of these things. Um, yes, I'll also say that we, we've been trying to stretch the budget with this. And so uh, this whole study is kind of designed as we're getting, you know, people with specific knowledge of this put down their thoughts, not to have the engineer write their thoughts, not to do the math. So this is, you know, it's not like this is gonna be buildable plans, but we're trying to get right knowledge, you know, and trying to get the right information so we can make some, you know, come up with some good ideas.
And that, I think that requires a good input from the community.
Absolutely.
Not just your experts.
Oh, absolutely. That's, that's exactly what public engagement is for.
Okay.
Pete, I think we've got Anna on the line anyway, so hopefully she heard all that that you uh were putting out there.
Scott, I'd like to thank you for coming and giving this update. Uh, just interesting that it's on the night when we're talking about a standing up and providing the leadership, because I believe that it was City of Scappus that stood up and really pushed for this rail corridor study to be done uh during a renewal of one of the uh permits or leases that the port had. So there, and now here we are going through this process. It's gonna make it a better study for the entire county. So I appreciate you continuing forward with this study.
Yeah, we, we didn't forget about it. Just wasn't a whole lot to say until we got the state grant.
Yeah, understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, number five, resolution number twenty-one dash sixteen, a real, resolution of the city slash port county waiving standard enterprise zone tax abatement. Employee requirements under section three HB twenty-three forty-three for Cascade Tissues Group Oregon converting a division of Cascades Holding US Inc., Cascade located in South Columbia County Enterprise Zone. Uh, Mr. Vogel, I did have one person that I told them they could speak now, so can. No, I want you to speak now.
Well, there's, and there's multiple microphones.
Oh, I feel very like we're Congress now, line of.
Hi, uh, my name is Brian Rosenthal. I live at three two two five six JP West Road. Just outside of city limits, but I don't, do own a variety of properties inside of city limits. Um, I'm also on the Economic Advisory Committee, but I'm not here in any official position on that. I've been on it since it was formed. I've been chairman of the committee, vice chairman, and just general member, which is what I'm doing now. Um, I came here to talk about this because this concerned me. The reason it concerned me is very different than maybe a lot of other people. Scappus is a pro-growth town. And we, did you?
Do speak, Brian.
Sorry, a little closer.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm here because I have some concerns, but they might not be the ones you're thinking of. Yeah, Puss is a pro-growth town. And when we passed the UGB expansion several years ago, myself and others campaigned for it and we all talked about the job creation and tax base creation this would create for us. Surprisingly, it just barely passed. It was by a handful of votes. One of my fears is that if we do stuff like this, we'll take scappus from being a pro-growth town, making scappus a non-pro-growth town. Because people need to feel that they, that it's to their benefit for growth to happen. Now, when originally when they got this enterprise zone tax situation, it promised to create jobs with good pay. Haven't been able to do that for whatever reason. I don't understand why they can't because they just raised their dividend by fifty percent two months ago. Their stock has almost doubled since the start of the pandemic. But they can't, and that's fine. That's their business decision. If you guys go ahead and give them this tax break, you're doing is you're telling them that it's okay. Don't worry about it. Meanwhile, we have movie theaters and restaurants and all these other businesses that are really struggling. They're not getting tax breaks. There has to be a sense of fairness to all this. Otherwise, scappus will not continue to be a pro-growth town. So I'd just like you to think about that. Um, there's, just, I just don't know how you can justify it. How can you tell somebody who lives in a little three-bedroom house here in town that they need to pay more for their water or sewer? So a company that's raising their dividend fifty percent, a company that has sales in billions of dollars, company that did not meet their obligation to the city, doesn't have to pay taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vogel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Excuse me. Um, try to be as brief as I can. I'm, I'm here tonight. I've been here a lot lately, but I'm here tonight and uh uh, as the enterprise zone manager with that hat on. Um, and uh, as you know, we're, we're the uh Columbia Economic Team is the enterprise zone manager. We're partially funded through the Betterment Fund that scappus, City of Scappus and St. Helen's share uh from the uh from fees paid by enterprise zone uh companies. Um, so we advocate for enterprise zone companies uh as their partner. We don't represent the companies. Um, thank you for time on the agenda. Thank you also for shuffling your, your agenda so that I could uh also meet with the city of Vernonia. The uh, appreciate you taking up this action item. Uh, it's a temporary employment waiver uh action and it's time sensitive because of the legislative mandate under which it was authorized. There's only a brief window to act and a brief window to assist our company partners. Um, all, all those circumstances of this pandemic are exceptional. Uh, actions like this uh resolution or this law and this law uh are, are not that unusual in, in addressing them. Employment waivers were also temporarily enacted in the Great Recession about a decade ago. The HB twenty-three forty-three employment waiver is an acknowledgement of the economic realities and the impact of the economic disruption of the pandemic, what it's having on businesses. Our legislature, which I think we can all agree, could barely, could barely agree on anything last session, did agree that providing this statutory opportunity to help enterprise zones help companies, whether the storm and adjust in the economy was a priority. HB twenty-three forty-three was passed specifically to address enterprise zone qualified businesses for which attaining required employment level and, and maintaining uh required employment levels is impacted by COVID. Executive orders, protocols, related economic circumstances. The investments still have to be made. The higher wages still have to be paid. Uh, and Business Oregon, which, which monitors enterprise zones, reports that more than thirty companies are similarly impacted across the state. HB twenty-three forty-three is the Oregon Legislature committing to work with business partners. And the action proposed for resolution tonight would be the Columbia County Enterprise Zone sponsors and economic development partners. Excuse me, also committing to working collaboratively with business partners and stakeholders under these exceptional circumstances. So the resolution before you is to provide a good faith acknowledgement of these circumstances and a temporary two-year opportunity for Cascade Tissue to achieve just one of the required elements uh in order to retain the tax abatement approved by all six Columbia County Enterprise Zone sponsors in late twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. The elements are Cascades has already made its committed fourteen million dollar investment. It's paying a hundred and fifty percent of annual covered wages to its employees. Cascade is acting as in good faith. Where they're falling short is the required ten percent increase in zone-wide Cascade Tissue employment level for the first ten months of this year. HB twenty-three forty-three statutorily allows for a little more time to reach that level without the company losing the authorized abatement the zone sponsors approve. Further, good faith has demonstrated that Cascades could have requested a construction in process or a CIP designation while the equipment was being installed and made operational. They didn't choose to do that, instead preferring to move forward as quickly as possible and in good faith, get the two new lines into production as soon as possible. The economy and the market for their products has not been as ambitious or, or helpful. While Cascades is a company diversified, diversified across many paper products. While Cascades is a company diversified across many paper products, these two new lines manufacture out-of-home products, commercial-grade towels, napkins, et cetera. Primary customers, offices and buildings, traditional workplaces where employees have not returned to work. Restaurants that have closed are limited in reopening, starve for workers and adjusted, and have adjusted to using sanitizer as much as paper products. And those, those are just two examples. In its letter requesting consideration under HB 2343, Cascades stated, "Ovid 19 has significantly impacted Cascade's sales as well as its production, due in large part to limited demand for Cascade's products in the away-from-home market." In 2020, Cascade's sales for its U.S. away-from-home business underperformed its projections by $19 million. In addition, Cascade's current production levels have been impacted by this diminished demand. Cascade's Scapoose facility produced 520,000, 21,000. As is less than it projected for the first two quarters of 2021. This decreased production represents a 22% reduction in Cascade's anticipated production levels. Cascades has made good faith investments in Columbia County. Total investment to date, more than $120 million in capex alone, not payroll. Capex, more than $60 million in Scapoose alone. Pay 150% of annual covered average wages and employ close to 200 people in just their local plant operations and management. And the company purchased an extra 15 acres at its Scapoose site for a future Phase Two. With these investments, enterprise zone sponsors have approved multiple two-year extended abatements that have worked as intended, collaboratively helping expedite success during the startup with the greater good and long-term benefit in mind. As a result, over the next three years, approximately $1 million will be rolling into the tax base in various taxing districts or the urban renewal districts. Which brings us back to the 2020 exemption and the employment waiver request we have. In late 2020 and early 2021, the union of six zone sponsors approved a two-year extended, total of five years abatement request by Cascades for yet a new additional investment of 14 million. Good faith gesture and commitment by local partners to the company to encourage and facilitate its continued investment in job creation here. Cascades, acting in that same good faith, purchased and installed the equipment and started hiring. Market has not been kind. Four months later, at reporting time in April, lines were not at full production due to market conditions. Cascades now needs more time to weather the market, expand sales and get these two new lines up to full production. Not asking for a free pass, but to extend the exemption period. It stays at five years. Only the limited two-year window authorized by the legislature for exactly these types of exceptional circumstances. In effect, by its request, Cascades is acting in good faith on its commitment to increase employment. It wants to achieve that goal. And the commitment of our communities and the enterprise zone sponsors in the spirit of partnership, a partnership that's generated more than $120 million in investment and allow one more tax year for the markets to recover, Cascades to reach its full employment increase of just over 20 employees. By the law, the statutory employment waiver and Cascade's own commitment, if the company isn't able to reach the requirement in tax year 22, 23, their approved exemption or abatement will be denied. The investment will immediately go to the full tax rolls, fully to the tax rolls. If there's any question why we're here, bringing this to the sponsors, that's on me as the zone manager. The abatement exemption had been unanimously approved by all sponsors. And this request wouldn't change the tax implications at all, including not extending them. And I proceeded on this as an administrative matter because I've been fortunate in my experience in Columbia County. It's that collectively, we do and must work collaboratively to help our businesses, stakeholders and each other succeed. Provide a hand when needed to help get things done. We fill gaps when they need filling. Help each other, our businesses and our communities, work through challenges. And we work together through long-term vision for success and the greater good. This council's demonstrated that again and again through COVID grants, supporting the business center and many other things. So as the enterprise zone manager acting on the request of a partner, we're asking the zone sponsors to recognize the circumstances, which we can all see and are all feeling, and honor our business partners' requests to work together collaboratively, honoring the mutual commitments made, striving to fulfill the one remaining small gap, the employee count, or just two allowable tax years. Reaching that target employee number will signal economic recovery and market recovery, increased employment and a good use of a multimillion-dollar investment already made, a shared success for all stakeholders. We ask that the city council, as one of the zone sponsors, authorize a temporary statutory employment waiver request for Cascade's tissues' most recent investment. Happy to answer questions.
Any questions?
Council president first.
Oh, you said council, I recognize you.
Paul, on, on page, on page three, and you noted this in your presentation, that Cascades has until December of 2022 to meet their obligations.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
They still basically have 14 months to meet their employment goal. And so I'm, I'm wondering how a profitable company with the, as Mr. Rosenthal mentioned, with 50% increase in dividends and stock prices are up, I feel 100%, why they can't come up with some kind of formulation to meet their employment goals in the next 14 months?
Well, the, by the law, the jobs have to be associated with this particular investment. Cascades is a North American, actually global company diversified geographically, diversified across all product lines. This is one investment in two lines. The jobs have to be associated here. Now, they could hire more janitors, but that's not, that's not legitimately getting this investment into production.
So how is that going to change if, if we grant this exemption? How is that going to change that formulation then?
They're outselling. People are starting to return to work and they are counting, they're counting on the commercial market that these two lines serve, produce for, to rebound. They're expecting.
So that could, that could well happen in the next 14 months and this would be a moot point.
They're counting on it, yes.
Thank you.
And the other, I forgot how you worded it. It was in here. Enterprise zone sponsors, how many of those need to approve this in order for it to work?
All six.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Vogel, I have a few questions here. So on page one, so am I reading this correctly that they are required to hire 21?
21 employees.
And how, how many have they actually hired?
I don't know specifically. It's somewhere, it's somewhere about half of that because they, they have been in production, but they're, they're well below production.
So we're here talking about an employment exemption, but you don't know the number of people that they hired?
All, the only thing that's tracked by the assessor's office is, are you at this number? And when they say, no, we're not at that number, that's, that, that triggers it.
Thank you. Did they ever reach 21?
I don't know the answer to that.
Has there been any outsourcing?
Outsourcing. For production lines? That, I don't know if that would even qualify.
That's why I'm asking. Has there been any contract in employees or anything? Contractors, rather?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And so if there's 45 days, then we're at 37 now. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe so. November 9th is the deadline.
So there, you said earlier there were six zone sponsors?
Yes.
And did I hear you correctly that five have already said yes to this?
I did not say that, no.
Okay, sorry. So how many are left?
Four are left, including this, this council.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, you're, you're saying that.
Hold on, Josh. Go ahead.
Okay. You're saying that the, the global company is making money, but the local company is not doing so well? Is that what you told us? We hear all these reports on dividends going up and stocks doubling and everything, but that, our, our little operation here isn't contributing to that.
The exemption was granted for this particular investment, these two production lines specifically. And that's what is measured under, under the enterprise zone abatement and this waiver. So it's not, it's not global performance. It is, it's $14 million investment. These two production lines, the employment associated with that, increasing overall employment.
So that, that hasn't happened like you thought it would. It's been affected by the pandemic.
Hasn't happened like they thought it would either.
And I don't get how the pandemic has affected them. It seems like everything that they sell is in more popular demand than it ever was.
Once again, these are, these are out-of-home products. These are commercial towels, office, office building restrooms, restaurants. None of the commercial market has, has come back because no, people have not, particularly when we got the second wave. People haven't returned to office buildings. People are still working hybridly or remotely completely. And so their commercial contracts, their commercial customers aren't buying product. This isn't, this isn't just, this isn't just in-home bath tissue, toilet tissue. They're still producing that, although there was a real lag in that market because of the hoarding in 2022, or 2020. But it's, it's starting to rebound.
One, one more question. Mr. Preheim, when he mentioned, he had some comments, I think before you got here. He mentioned there was some connection between, with revenues between, he mentioned your name and maybe Economic Development Commission. Is there some, something there that I went over my head?
There's, when Cascade Tissue signed at the enterprise zone, the extended enterprise zone.
Correct.
They agreed to, I believe, a 10% Betterment Fund.
Correct.
So 10% of the taxes they would pay go into a Betterment Fund, which,
I understood that.
Which is split between the City of Scapoose and Columbia County Economic Team during the period so that a Columbia County.
And the City of St. Helens.
Well, I was just, the, the money's here. The St. Helens money's are based on the taxes generated in.
It's, it's split with the zone.
But our money is going into urban renewal, no?
Not the Betterment.
Yeah, so the Betterment Fund just goes into our general fund for certain things. And it's actually, to be honest, it's on par with what I believe what the City of Scapoose would be getting in taxes anyways. Unless it's, or is that if?
No.
My proposal of doubling it to 20%.
I think it would, yeah, would at least have to do that. The, the Betterment Fund for this, and we haven't received anything because they were denied the abatement this year, would be about $22,000, which we would split 50/50. 50% going to the City of St. Helens and Scapoose, 50% for our management administrative.
Five, 25/50?
Oh, I believe we get a larger percentage.
Scapoose gets a larger percentage.
It's not 50/50 because there's three entities.
Oh.
Correct.
Josh.
So my question, Mr. Vogel, is regards to the abatement. So you're, so basically the ask is to grant a, a, an extension for the hiring of employees to that, to level that we need. Now, if that is not made, that is not met by the end of 2022, do, is there a requirement that the taxes that would have been paid over the 2021 and 2022 be paid back?
If, if they don't, so it's not an extension. It's, it's essentially a moratorium on that, on that employment level. So it doesn't extend anything, but if they don't, if they don't reach that number by the end of 2022, then their exemption is denied, their, their, their property tax abatement that was approved is denied. So they, they go, that goes on the tax rolls. They're getting no more exemption.
Well, so would that be based, would that be on the future from, say, 2023? If they didn't meet that by 2022, or is that go backwards and the, the previous tax years that were abated have to be paid for?
I believe, I believe it is the three years going forward.
All right, thank you.
Council president.
How many years have they been in production?
I believe. I believe they started in St. Helens in 2013. They've, they've basically been here since 2013.
In the Scapoose location?
I think that was 2017. Wasn't here, but I believe it was 2017.
And the pandemic started in 2020?
Yes.
Thank you.
So this is the, this isn't the construction abatement for the structure and the original equipment. This is the new equipment that came in.
Yes, this is just that.
Just the new equipment that came in.
Correct.
For the specific purpose of the commercial market.
Correct.
So just to clarify, did I hear correctly that it was a 10% increase that was required?
Correct.
In, in staffing?
Correct.
Do we know how many they started with?
They were at 193 when that was approved.
All facilities or the Scapoose facility?
All zone-wide.
Any more questions?
How many was that here in Scapoose?
I, I'm sorry, I don't. I, I don't know. The, it's, it's rough, probably roughly half, but I don't have that information on me right now.
Let's take it to a vote.
I just need a motion.
Motion to vote.
Well, a motion.
Motion to, yeah.
I have no pulse on what's happening up here with my fellow. I have no idea what is happening up here with my fellow counselors. Like, I don't know what anybody's gonna say.
Oh, I wouldn't make the motion, I'll tell you that. Oh, I, I guess I'm, are we taking a poll?
I just kind of like.
If no one's gonna make the motion, then.
I don't know.
Oh, if no one makes a motion.
The rule stays the way it is.
Yeah, there's, we don't need to make a motion. I don't want to make any.
You have, I, I don't know. Can I hear your opinion or?
My opinion, if, if this were to go to a vote, I would vote nay at this point.
What I would try and say too, just directly.
Yeah, there, I mean, there's what, eight days left too, so it's not like we can get, we don't have time really to get more information either before the next council meeting. I, I'm really curious about levels, the employee, the employment levels.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, if there's no motion.
No, I, I want to know what you've, I mean, got a pulse on these things.
Mixed feelings. Clearly, the legislature put something in to give this kind of abatement. This isn't an abatement for the entire plant that I believe is coming off the enterprise zone.
Starts rolling off in '23, yeah.
Yeah. This is for new equipment that came in. I think. I think that, you know, for the market that it was brought in for, I, I think there was good faith by Cascade to try to do it, but the market, you know, offices were closed. There was no market. So, I mean, we're talking about they needed to create 21, they've fallen short. If they can't get there by the end of 2022, then they lose the rest of the exemption for the rest of the years.
Yep.
And I'm kind of okay with that. I mean, giving them a chance. I mean, how many restaurants are closed on Mondays because they can't get staff right now? And how many restaurants are closed on Mondays and Tuesdays? Who would be surprised, the number of people I drop off to a restaurant on Monday that they're shocked that it's closed because they don't have the staff? So it's.
In my opinion, is in the end, they're gonna get punished one way or the, you know.
Yeah, my, well, yeah, exactly. Well, I mean, if they can't get to where they have to be by the end of twenty twenty two, then they get punished on this fourteen million in taxes.
It's just the ten percent that were, is that issue?
Yeah, it's the fourteen million investment that's on the tax rolls that would be.
Well, it's just a ten percent increase in employment that is of issue, is that correct?
Right.
And it looks like this, all this does is gives them extra time to get to that level. And then they would lose their assess or their.
Exemption.
Their exemption, if they can't get there by December twenty twenty two, then there is no extension of that exemption. You know, I mean, so I mean, to be honest, I I I lean to a yes because the the tax rate on fourteen million isn't, it's not, we're not talking about the entire structure and a structure which their lo- long term plans are to add more parts to that building. You know, we, in some respects, I mean, this is where I go into that we were, we're not, we're not competing against other places just locally when it comes to extending these factories or whatnot. We're competing throughout the West Coast for a West Coast manufacturing system. And, you know, they could easily pull the plug, they could easily move somewhere else and do the rest elsewhere. So, I mean, yeah, it's, to me, it's just, are we willing to give them a chance to make it by December twenty two or not? And it sounds like it's could be hiring ten more employees and getting them staffed and growing the business so that they need those employees, I mean.
It's it's in their best interest to do that and get to full production. It's in the community's best interest to do that. It all, it all comes together if if they get to that level. And I I wouldn't, you know, this isn't existential for Cascades. Um I I didn't, I haven't heard anyone say that they would pull the plug. They've made a lot of investment here and they've they've fulfilled multiple Enterprise Zone exemptions and started money rolling back onto the tax rolls. They've been a good investor here for quite some time. This is one at a time that's bizarre time for us all. And they've asked for little little time, little help, just let them get to that employment level. The investment's already made, the money's, you know, the equipment's in, operating.
Good, Counsel Miller.
Mr. Vogel, so any one of the six zone sponsors can basically say no, correct, and it fails?
I believe that's the case.
Okay, and how many are still pending?
Uh, well, uh, three after after tonight.
And you only have about eight days to get their answers, correct?
They're all scheduled.
Can you share who those other district partners are?
Sure, uh, the Port of Columbia County approved this last week. Uh, City of Vernonia approved it tonight. Um, City of St. Helens is considering this on Wednesday, as is the County Commission. And the City of Columbia City is considering it Thursday.
I'm curious if Peter has any input.
Well, if you were to say no, you would essentially be vetoing it. And um we have, what he said is that there there are several partners that have already approved this and and think that it's um think that it is necessary and something that should be done. Uh, I mean, what he said was that certain assumptions were made based on pre pandemic conditions about how much sanitary towels and and other restaurant specific things would be sold. And I think all of us imagine, based on the closure of offices and restaurants and and the use of hand sanitizer instead of soap and water um becoming far more prevalent, that those market conditions could continue. And what they believe is that people will return back to a norm. Um, you know, whether it's um a full norm or not, that they will have enough production in order to be able to meet their goals and fulfill their requirements. And they just need a little extra time to do it. So I what I've heard from Mr. Vogel in the past about Cascade is that um they've been a good partner for him and they've been a good partner for the city. We know that there are places they could have moved operations and they chose to come here instead. Um, there have been some excellent points that were made regarding their profitability. But ultimately, their overall profitability in this are essentially divorced because their in home stuff might be through the roof. But they might not be easily be able to pivot in this facility to do that. And so at that point, their decision would be to manufacture at the rate that they'd need to with the employees and warehouse everything up, or to ask for a little bit of patience from the jurisdictions and say, they're still going to work in good faith, they're still very motivated to meet their deadline. Um, but they need extra time to do it. So ultimately, um, if you were to say no, then he would stop going to other cities. And then they were then to decide to that's somewhere other than here. Everyone would be impacted. Um, all of those other jurisdictions would be, their bottom line would be impacted through lack of future investment. So I think that that, we talked a lot about partnership tonight and about being good members of the team, um about looking out for each other in coordination. So maybe that's something that would be applicable here too. And then maybe that there's a, if there's another jurisdiction that doesn't believe this is a good thing or it's not worth the investment, so be it. But um obviously, several already have said that they think it is.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we extend this meeting past nine o'clock.
Hearing a motion to extend the meeting past nine o'clock, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Miller, any discussion? Seeing none, all those state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Fair.
Counsel Miller.
Kind of going off of what uh the Attorney Watts said, do, obviously Cascades has, like, confirmation Cascades has the residential lines too, right? Where they produce residential products?
Yes, sir.
Okay, as, do you know if they have increased at any point their staffing on the residential? I'm trying to make the good faith argument here in my head and connect the dots.
I I I don't know the answer to that. I mean, they they've had to maintain, they've, they have exemptions related to some of that equipment. They have to maintain those levels at a minimum.
Counsel.
I guess this is for Paul and the and Counsel and and Peter. Uh, you know, bouncing off your comments, Peter, you know, I'm just thinking about the nature of business and and the and the and adapting to change and dealing with that effectively and so forth. Uh, Cascade has fourteen months uh to meet their obligations. It's not a huge obligation, not talking about hiring hundreds of people or hiring, talking about hiring ten more people. Um, and if a business can't uh come up with in fourteen months a mechanism to deal with that, I I'm just, I I just don't see how this is going to be an incentive for them to do that uh by granting them more time. And, you know, businesses are going to leverage their advantages as much as they can. And they're going to pay as little as they possibly can for profitability. That's just the nature of business. I don't, I don't begrudge that, that's just the nature of business. So uh this is a, this is actually an opportunity. We're gonna motivate, you know, by not passing this, but we're gonna, we can motivate, help motivate Cascade to come up with a solution to this and and meet the obligations and then save uh that those tax dollars for their shareholders. So I I just don't see a persuasive argument uh for for supporting this.
Excuse me, if if you if you don't support this, then they're already denied.
Would you say it again?
If you don't support this, they've already been denied for this tax year.
Right.
So that I I I'm just trying to understand the motive.
You have, you haven't, Cascade has until December of twenty twenty two to meet their obligations. You stated that earlier.
If if you pass this. Only if you pass this, they've already been denied for this tax year, they'll be denied for next tax year. Unless this resolution is passed enacting twenty three forty three.
Well, okay, so I I don't, that really confuses me now more because on item on page three, as I indicated earlier, says should Cascades fail to reach required employment level by twenty, December of twenty twenty two, the exemption provided shall expire. What's what's un, what's ambiguous about that?
This resolution is passed granting them the waiver they have until December twenty twenty two. If the if the waiver is not granted, then they are denied.
So what you're reading is right out of the resolution where it is, Scapu City Council resolves as follows, in union with the zone's other co sponsors, item four is what we're resolving, should they fail by that date. Otherwise, they are canceled and.
If if you, if they don't meet that by twenty twenty.
No, no, if we don't pass this, they don't have till two twenty twenty two.
Correct.
Yesterday.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Pauling.
So uh so Paul, what, again, what what is the approximate number of employees that they would need to hire?
Um, I I only know they're under twenty one, I believe they were at about ten or eleven.
So so the another ten or eleven employees they would need to hire?
They have in, they have budgeted for two hundred and twenty employees in this zone for twenty twenty two. That's their goal.
So for me, this, you know, uh, basically, what we would be doing is extending, you know, an abatement and, you know, basically uh setting Cascades up to make sure that they hire a certain amount of employees by the end of that time period. If we do not pass it, there's no there's no push for them to hire those additional employees going forward. Um, we kind of put it in their hands if we do pass this. If we don't pass this, then we're not really forcing them. And I I guess we wouldn't be forcing them either way, they could just not hire those employees and their uh their abatement would end at the end of twenty twenty two. But we put a little more pressure on them to hire more employees if we do pass it. That's the way I kind of look at it a little bit.
Well, I I agree with you, Josh, I, but I believe that if if we don't pass it, their abatement ends right away.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we know what that tax amount is on the fourteen million roughly? They would go towards Scapus?
I believe it's in the neighborhood of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, something like that.
Between the district, not just the city of Scapus.
That's that's the, that's the assessed, that's that's the tax.
The assessed value of tax.
Correct.
On the equipment within the Enterprise Zone.
Correct.
Ten percent of that's twenty two thousand.
So for me, I think we need to firm this up a little bit. We're all on the same page that if we don't pass this, then they have really no incentive to meet the hiring deadline, right? Or the the hiring quota.
Oh, because they are, yeah, they're denied from.
Yeah, that is my perspective as well.
When you put it into that context, it makes sense to me to grant this because we do want them to hire more.
I agree.
And I.
I think my argument to that, though, would be that they agreed to be able to say that they could hire twenty one staff members, correct?
Correct.
Would hope that a global industry as large as Cascade Tissue understand what their staffing needs were and knowing if they were able to reach that or not. Granted, I understand that the pandemic uh has changed things. I I I believe that they would, they would know what their power is to be able to meet production goals. And so they wouldn't agree to something that they know that they couldn't meet. So that's where I I understand ultimately we're extending by ten months to allow them to meet that uh that threshold that they agreed to. But I also know that by driving down the, across from their uh their their facility, three months ago, they had now hiring signs, now those now hiring signs are down. So then it makes me question, well, what are they doing then to recruit for employees if they have this need? So I get very confused because I don't know if I don't, I don't know what their intentions are. Is it, is it to see how the market develops five, six months out to know if they want to invest in those employees? Or are they just trying to use this to their advantage, use this uh abatement to their advantage to elongate until they can make a different financial um decision on how their company would move forward, backfilling those positions? So to me, I feel like they have the information, they have the re, uh, the the opportunity to recruit because we know that our positions that are, our people are looking for jobs. So I have a head scratcher on wanting to know what does that extra ten months necessarily do for them? Does it incentivize them or does it give them more time? In the sense of more time for them to make business decisions for their stockholders, essentially. So I I just want to make sure that we're doing what's best for our community, not just solely what's best for business that is within our community. So I I still am not fairly sold that this ten extra months that we would provide them necessarily a direct need rather than a desired need.
I I can't, I can't speak to all those issues. I they wouldn't ask for this if they weren't trying to get to that level. This is two lines making widgets and the market ain't buying widgets, it's buying something else. But you're right, they're smart people, they do forecasting, they're looking at sales, they're looking at demand, they're looking at all of that. It it wouldn't, it wouldn't make a lot of sense for them to, I mean, it would make one, one more tax year of sense for them. And that's just not really been their behavior. They've been solid all the way through since two thousand thirteen. Um, they they launched, they they installed equipment in the middle of COVID and things have not recovered the same, the way they expected to. I don't think, I don't think, I don't think any, any company in the world is right on its projections for twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Um, and they've got, they've got two hundred and twenty people budgeted for next year in the zone. That means that that means that they would be at full production, they want to be at full production. That's, that's what makes a plant profitable. They have, they have dozens of plants all over North America and the U S and they each need to be profitable in their own right. These two lines are dragging this particular plant down and that's what this exemption is associated with.
Counsel President.
I actually want to speak to a a major systemic issue that's happening right now. I have several people in my household and immediate family that are in management. And I I I don't agree that there are a lot of people out there that want to work because the people that I personally know, who are having help wanted, now hiring, setting up interviews, people are turning in applications, but then they don't show up to the interview or there's no follow up because of the government incentives right now and as well as unemployment. They just have to show that they are seeking employment. And there's a a major problem with with people trying to hire and needing help and nobody's coming to the table, you know? Uh, I I have a hard time when, you know, my husband is willing to pay people a very reasonable family living wage and nobody wants to work because they can make more doing nothing, right? But yet they can continue to receive that money by just showing that they turned in an application. Um, so I think there's a much bigger issue here than an employer just putting up a sign, help wanted, and nobody's coming. I mean, I I hate to like be blunt, but there's a lot of lazy people out there that don't want to work. And they're very able to earn a living by doing nothing. Now, are there people? Now, are there people that do want to work and have that drive and initiative? Absolutely. And I encourage them to turn in applications and show up for interviews because those are the exact people that will want to work for them. But I feel also for, for businesses that are trying to hire. There's, there's other, other sides to it.
It's a, it's a big riddle. We've, we've got a number of workforce partners in the, in the toughest part is resolving the, the reasons people aren't working. And it's not, you know, there, there are a lot that are not working because they need a change, they just need a change. There are folks who are not working because they can not work. But there's nothing that's really overwhelming. We've been able, that any of our partners, and they're all in the workforce business, we're just, we're just in there working with them. It's a bit of a riddle, a bit of a riddle. There are different dynamics going on right now and it's, it's very puzzling to employees, employers, very puzzling.
You could approve this contingent upon the other jurisdictions approving it. So if he were to get the other jurisdictions on board with this, then you would say if this is important to our partners in the county or five partners in the county, then it's important to us and we're going to approve it. If one of the other jurisdictions decided to decline it, then it would be done anyway. So it, the alternative would be scheduling a special council meeting um, prior to the deadline. I don't know how much our city manager would enjoy doing that. But, um, those are, are, you know, your option tonight would be to make a determination on whether you want this to pass or not. To make a decision contingent upon the decisions of others or to schedule a council meeting so that maybe Paul could come back with some more of the data that you need to hear. And we could help him get those questions, uh, so that he could get your answers, if that's how you're inclined to go.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Polling.
Uh, for me, again, I, I think it's a pretty simple equation. Um, I know that, I know that there's a lot that we could talk about and move in the, uh, you know, and, and question, but um, for me, it's, you know, uh, as a, as a company, I would rather invest money into um, employees rather than pay taxes. Um, and if that's what would be required of me in order to avoid taxes for another fourteen months, I would make that decision eh, full heart, full-heartedly. And for me, if that, if that means that we're going to create more jobs in our county and not just in our county, in our city, uh, I am all for this.
Paul, one last question. Uh, the letter you have that, uh, it's addressed, that's from the County Economic Team is dated September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. So the one that's in the packet.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't pick up a packet.
Okay, anyway, the, the letter that's, it's in our pack is, is dated September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. And so my question is with, with eight days to go, why is it we're, we're just addressing this now?
That's a good question. We, uh, getting the guidance and the delineation of how nor, normally when a bill is passed, rules are written, the administration of the, of the law is, is figured out. This was being done on the run and, um, we were trying to understand how, how it would apply and whether they still wanted to be subject to it. So it, it, it's a matter of us trying to get our arms around it and make sure that they were in and we understood it and could bring it forward in which, and there were a number of different options under the bill. Um, and, uh, we had to determine which, which one was more straightforward. So, a lot of it is, is the staff time trying to get that pulled together.
And what was the date of House Bill twenty-three forty-three?
Well, it went into effect, well, it, it passed, I think sometime in June and was signed in July, August, something like that. And then the effective date of it was September twenty-fifth.
All right, thank you.
So I think there's quite a few things here that what I'm hearing, my interpretation of is like, you don't really like the taste of, but if we narrow it down to the issue that matters, at least the way that I look at it, it is, it's getting more people hired, giving people jobs. And I think by rejecting this, the way that it's sounding is we are basically doing the opposite, we're not encouraging them to keep hiring. So we, I think we all, each one of us needs to decide what's really important here. Like I said, I think there's some things here that we all don't like the taste of, but we need to focus on what it is that's important and move forward with this. For me, it's the jobs. And encouraging jobs.
I think that, uh, what we need is someone to put a motion on the table so that we can have a vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Polling.
Uh, I move that we, uh, approve Resolution twenty-one sixteen waiving uh, the standard for the enterprise zone tax abatements, employee requirements under section three, House Bill two-three-four-three.
Hearing a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-one dash sixteen by Counsel Polling, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Polling, any debate by the council, any qu, comments? All those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
So the votes for three in favor. All right, next item on the agenda, number seven, annual community event.
Thank you as always, Paul.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, Council, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, this is just to kind of build on the momentum from the Scapu Centennial Event. As you recall, the citizens, the community, community groups and yourselves, we're all interested in seeing more about a possible future annual event. Um, so, uh, in the weeks and months after the event, there was the opportunity to roundtable and debrief about the event. And as you will see in your packet, there were many useful, um, potential opportunities for a learning and retooling some of what happened and occurred during the event um, towards something a little more manageable on an annual basis. And the content of my staff report was meant to provide context for a discussion about if and how um, council would like the city to be involved in future annual events. And so first, I guess I'd like to see if there was any questions to clarify on.
Look forward and plan.
Uh, Isaac, the, you, you didn't include the Doggy Dash as one of the events. Now, that was a really fun, a popular event, so I think that should be included in there.
Agreed. There were many events that did not get included just because there was so much saturation. Um, but you're right, that was well attended and well liked.
I think that was one of the comments, there were too many different activities to do from over too many locations.
Correct, and that was specifically one of the opportunities to make something sustainable and potentially scalable, um, by focusing the event to something that could be repeatable um, and potentially grow because there was some concern among different parties about growing the event versus keeping it small and kind of taking time to define the purpose of the event. Is it to bring the community together? Is it to grab people from outside and bring them here? Um, so that would be something that would develop over time, I believe, if, if annual events happen.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank you and your team for taking the time to reflect on such an important event and make it a priority to continue having community events and especially of a, a, an annual yearly big notable event. So thank you for taking the lead on this and, um, I think that that's always on our goal list as a council is to have more community events. So um, the work in this report and in that event and the events to come are much appreciated. So thank you.
Um, so that was not me alone. There's some community members here tonight who participated in that as well. I mean, it does sound like council is interested in, in this being reoccurring, um, happening here. So, um, I'm not sure if you'd like our suggestions about what that might look like, um, or to hear what the discussion was more specifically.
I, I'd be interested.
So, so, so more, more specifically about the event, there was, there was all agreement that, um, the annual event was a good thing, that, that people would like to see it again. Um, I think that the largest point of disagreement was how the event is created. And the difficulty for that is you'll see in the staff report is that, um, staff time to put on the event in-house versus having a committee put together versus hiring an event. Um, I can say that the majority of the committee members agreed that having an event coordinator was helpful. Um, they have the specific knowledge and skills, um, they know how to get the best deals, they know how to plan these things, they're extremely efficient. And that is not something that myself or any of the staff believe are trained in. Um, there is a competing interest, which is keeping the local context of, of the event as it develops and grows. And that was very important for everybody involved was to make sure that this event is Scapus-centric. And so, um, the event planner, Treadway Events, um, it kind of posed a halfway solution, a solution that takes both pieces from both sides where, um, they were to be hired again typically for an event like this, what they do is they come in and they create a very small group of local folks to advise on local context and to help with organizing. They do the technical administrative. Um, so if we were to do something in-house, um, that would probably be what staff's recommendation would be, would be to have staff hire an event coordinator to come in and then help coordinate a group to advise them. There's other possibilities, um, that were mentioned. To be, um, setting aside some money for a community group to do such a thing, um, in which case they would be, um, responsible for all the planning.
Any more questions from council? Are you looking for a direction tonight?
Um, yeah, I believe we are.
So it does sound like there is general interest in having a reoccurring event. I think from staff's perspective, um, since we did use budgeted funds from this fiscal year for the hundred-year event, you know, we waited till July and then actually used a lot of those funds. We'd want to at least check to see where we could pull funds from since there weren't additional funds budgeted for this. Um, if that's something you want to move forward with. The other thing it would be helpful to know too is timing, was there, you know, a certain time of year? Um, of course, these aren't decisions that absolutely have to be made tonight either, but those are the kind of direction we'd be looking for so that we can then, you know, come back with a more definite plan and maybe speak to, um, you know, an event planner that we could potentially hire, things like that. So there's just some certain kind of general details we might.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't make a date selection today right now.
No, but a general time of year would give us an idea of how much time we have. Like, you know, like, would you want it in fall every year or something like that?
Anytime.
Right, yeah.
Anytime, July.
Right.
Be aware, typically for event planning, things happen nine months to a year in advance.
That'd be the other thing to consider.
Well, what I'm saying that we shouldn't tonight make the decision on the date. I think the, I trust you and the committee, the group that's been working on it to be able to look at it and say this weekend, fair's not this weekend, the Rononia Jamboree's not this weekend, these other events that are going to draw people out of the community aren't on that weekend. We're not fighting the other communities in the county or, you know, attendance and recommend, recommend, recommendation. So, but they're probably already have their dates set. And if you don't have, you know, right now is the time to get in to guess the vendors are starting to schedule next year's events schedule and that's but I couldn't sit here and tell you right now what weekend that is. That's why I would trust you to make, you as the committee and staff to make that determination.
That's my, that's my.
Uh, we are going to make this an annual event. Um, I would just encourage us to look at the possibility of trying to um, generate enough revenue to break even on the expenses, not to profit at all, but if we could figure out a way, um, you know, obviously we want to be very careful with it, but if we can figure out a way to break even so that we have the money to throw these things every year without dipping into the general fund, that would be nice in my eyes also.
Yeah, the event management company actually has some ideas on that. Uh, most of their community events are actually profitable. Um, but they are typically ran by a community group. So for example, they put on an event in Longview and it was ran by the Rotary Club. Um, because they're the Rotary Club, they're already in a position to solicit donations from the community. Um, so they did a very good job with that. They do have experience with those kind of things.
A lot of those expenses are upfront expenses and, uh, so some of it will be returned, you know, when the event actually takes place and we realize whatever income we're going to receive. Uh, I think at this point, what we need, what we need to do is to, is have Alex or someone from the city who's official, uh, contact Treadway unless, unless they want to go with somebody else, but uh, I think we were all pretty much okay with Treadway, uh, and, and see uh, what, how they see the next step and, 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 uh, in the meantime, maybe we can try to figure out where, what dates are open. Uh, I think it was, we wanted to have it earlier than August, but we, one thing that I think the group decided, kind of, you know, and, uh, but, so I think at this point is, I'd recommend that we ask our city manager and maybe Alex or someone else to be involved with that to, uh, or Isaac and, and, and see what they recommend. If we're going to get something done by next summer, how do we do it? Because we don't, really, to be honest, we don't have that expertise and we were, we were, you know, kind of really struggling for most of the last year trying to figure out what was going to happen and how we're going to do it and, and Treadway when they came in, there were problems there, but nevertheless, they definitely kind of moved this right direction. So I say at this point, I'd like to see, uh, maybe us enter into a discussion with Treadway and how they see us getting a special event done, what it's going to cost and, uh, what their fees would be.
Can speak to their fees. Um, typically event coordinators charge fifteen to twenty percent of budget. So, um, it's kind of a sliding scale, um, as, as events grow, it's more. So that talk about cost is dependent on what we would hypothetically budget.
And they might not know what those fees are until after it's all over with.
Uh, it's, it's going to be the expected budget.
Well, that would be my, I don't know if that requires a movement or not. Other people on the committee are sitting out there though, maybe they have some opinions that haven't been expressed. Yeah. They, they did say they formed a committee of, of citizens and not very many on the committee, like we had a dozen or more people in our committee, but you know, the committee of four or five people that they would bounce things off and move forward from there. Is that, okay, yeah.
Well, whoever's talking, mind, mind going to the microphone, sorry.
Um, we always, we think the first Cybercrash Festival we had was in the summertime, but then we, uh, it just didn't work out real well because a lot of people are away on vacation. So we settled on the third Saturday in September and it was always just really popular. We always had really good luck with the, with the weather. Um, so you might also consider that because people are back into school, they're back in town. Thought.
I do remember now you had suggested that actually seems like a good idea.
Yeah.
I think the city does need to manage it because there's a lot of logistics and having a gap could create problems. So I think the city does need to manage. And I would, for me, I would think that we need to define a scope of work and give it to Treadway and what that looks like, what the city envisions that as, you know, city management, to make sure that it is the way that you guys expect it to be. I think that'll make it run more smoothly from the top down. But I, I think the first step would be to define exactly what you want that event management company to do. Make sure that, it seemed like a lot of people were very exhausted by the end of this event. So it seems like we need to have appropriate resources allocated to where.
You'll, you'll find that no matter what.
Yeah.
Another thing, we've hired a coordinator as well. You see a single person, not a company. And part of their remuneration was taking a part of a certain percentage of the vendor fees and those kind of things. So that might be another thing you might look at is to pay somebody, you know, if they have 100 vendors and take part of that fee. That might help with.
I could see the encouragement for them to bring more in. So yeah, I could see the benefit of that.
So you want to motion, Isaac?
I think Jeff had a comment though.
I think the council needs to give serious consideration to branding. Because in the, the three years I've been here, you've had, you know, we had sauerkraut festival and we've had a centennial. And sauerkraut, you know, the sauerkraut factory has been gone for a long time. So that's not really a brand for a city moving forward. And centennial happens once every 100 years, so.
You'll be at the next one, right?
Yeah, sure. So what, what's the brand for the city going forward? What would draw people here for an event or what would make the townspeople come for an event? And the other thing that's a long range concern is the facilities at Veterans Park, those really need to be enhanced and that's going to cost money. But there's inadequate electricity, parking's an issue. And if that venue is going to be used for events, not just for an annual event, all those things are going to have to be budgeted for and addressed.
So I think really we were just looking for some direction to clarify yes or no, do you want to look at the event? If so, what kind of budget issue are you looking at potentially having us look for?
That's not really a question I could answer tonight. I could, I could tell you to, that we support the event, that we'd like to support an annual event and follow the staff recommendations on the recommendation here. And, and if I could get a motion directing staff to follow their own recommendation at the end of their staff report, that would be great.
To start with, maybe you can change this motion however you like, but I recommend that we ask our city manager to enter into a discussion with Treadway about best way to sue an annual event for next year. And I also think ask the city to check on dates. I'm not even sure how you do that exactly. I know there's a source somewhere that would be available to us and we could look at, have that idea. That doesn't have to be this, you don't necessarily have to decide that, but we should know what options are there for dates. And I do like what Joe said, it said, I remember this discussion we had, tail end of everything we were talking about. September seemed like a pretty good option. It was just so hot this last year. So the movement is, I, I moved that the, we request staff to with Treadway and see what they recommend as to where we're going to get a special event for next year.
Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item, eight, electric vehicle charging stations project, project, Mr. Sukal.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to bring two representatives from the Columbia River PUD answering questions for the end items.
Thank you for being here this long, we appreciate it.
Oh, we can't keep your boss here because he's not here, so we're keeping you here.
Probably put his time in though. I'm Carl Webster, I'm a field engineer. I've been working with various people on the charging station.
And I'm Mike Aaron, distribution engineer and the energy services same manager, but I've kind of taken on the duties of managing that just over the last few weeks.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, as we're rolling late into the evening, I'll try to be as efficient with this as possible. In the spring of this year, we were approached by the PUD to be a potential partner in electrical vehicle charging stations. At that time, two charging stations were presented to us in which we started looking at a design for installing them in the city parking lot right outside the building here. As we were about a month into that design or so, we had heard that Tesla was interested moving into our community with some charging stations as well. And so we met with them and got a little more information and they were proposing for charging stations to one island. And so we considered locations that may be suitable for that, in front of the library. And there was just too many utilities in that location to put these. So we slid it down to the Watts House frontage, you can see in the exhibit. Very self-explanatory exhibit, hopefully to you. The four in red would be the Tesla sites. The two in blue would be the, you guys can elaborate on what. I guess, but the two be provided by the PUD with the ability to add on. In the future, if there's a need for these more generic charging stations, those would be added on to them. Should the, you know, ties ever come. That's really about it. What we would need provide is, is an easement into the lawn, as you can see, to the west that would go around the charging stations because ultimately they would have to sit where the current sidewalk is. The power, as you can see located in blue, would be where the PUD would spot a transformer and feed it from that pole. And at this point, we're just looking for direction from council. If this is something of interest that you would like us to pursue, if, if the season is something you'd be willing to grant. Next steps would be is that we would strike an agreement with the Tesla folks and with the PUD. The partnership would be a three-way split. We would be basically providing the, the site for this. Tesla would be funding their four chargers and the curb sidewalk modifications. And the PUD would be working to provide their two chargers and the infrastructure to power all of them. Tentatively, that's what we're saying, nothing signed, that's just kind of where things are landing right at the. Just looking, your appetite, if this is something of interest and just the nod to move forward.
So Director Sukal, looking at the diagram that was provided, parking spots or the parking stalls, excuse me, kind of changed in their direction. That be an overall change that would take place in this location.
So that would have to happen for the purposes of it. We looked at different dynamics, if, if they could angle, they cannot. I believe even some vehicles may have to back in to do charging because I think the port is in the rear of the vehicle. And that's why the 90 degree is recommended. We would basically have one spot that would be crosshatched out that you wouldn't park into, maybe a curb and island to represent the transition and parking dynamics. We would also be reworking the wheelchair ramp on that corner, pointed out. That answer your question?
Yes.
We acknowledge it, we measured the depth. The city planner has looked at the site, city engineers looked at the site. We've all verified that this technically would work or is adequate right away. Maybe in there with the additional easement to relocate the sidewalk. We've checked all the boxes, it does work. We just need, you know, your guidance if this is something you want to.
Currently here in Scapoose, we only have EV charging stations at the Fred Meyer parking location, is that correct?
I understand, yes.
Yep. And then with the Tesla, do we know how many Teslas are owned within our zip code?
That information has not been provided to me. Just know that this is funded by them, there's a no, no cost out of the city's pocket for this. So I assume they've done the, the studies to figure that out. Obviously, they're hoping that moving forward in the future, that the more these are available, the more that people will transition into them. But I don't know the current amount, I know that data is available, but I don't.
And I think, and that's perfectly fine, I appreciate the answer. And I think what this does is actually, it encourages folks maybe from, let's say, the Portland metro area to use Highway 30 as potentially a route for their trip. So if we can have them stop and they know that they can have charging opportunities here in Scapoose, then they would maybe stay a while while their vehicle is charging. Maybe they go and look at our local down, our east Columbia here and buy a coffee or do something, right? And so that's one of the opportunities that I do see here. I also know that Tesla is leading the charge in electric vehicle transportation, it is the way of the future. But I have an old fossil fuel guzzling vehicle, which I know many people in our community do. My question is, if I park in one of these stalls, what's going to happen to me?
Uh-oh.
That's a very good question. Is, is there any, I think there's anything from legal standpoint, I, I don't.
Something to keep in mind, I think. Tesla going to be upset at me, are they going to, Elon going to come and ticket me or anything?
There's signage for EV. But I don't know.
Are you a rule breaker, Lesowski?
I like, rules are meant to be broken sometimes, so.
So I do know, and I think that some of the reasons this Tesla charging station is a four-bank, it's, you couldn't do a three-bank with this. This is a new technology of those, I understand. So it's a high, higher speed test charging. And when you look at high-speed Tesla chargers in the metro area, there are none in the core. They're out on Anisborn, Washington Square. So this is perfect for destination point. And one of the things I know, having one person that I know that has a Tesla, two people actually, is that they can look for these fast chargers on their GPS built in their car, I need to go charge. It's going to map them right here, so.
And, and that was actually factored into this decision. We looked citywide, where would be the best fit? We homed in on this because it's centrally located, it brings people to the downtown businesses, such where there's, you know, coffee shops and bakeries available, city parks are available, the libraries available. There's a lot of things for them to kill that little bit of time they need to charge the vehicle, partaking the community's offerings. So thought that would be a good fit as well, so.
I do think it's a real win-win situation and the people using those chargers, I have two friends with a son-in-law and everybody knows about George's Tesla. But anyway, they, they, the local people, they charge them at home. It's the commuters that will be using these and there are not any spots anywhere near this area for commuters. And people will draw, they're going, they want to go Highway 26, they'll come this direction instead because they, they get it, get a charger. So I think it's a real good thing for our community to do and the location I think is great. And if you can park there without getting a ticket, if you don't have an electric car, that's all the better because we don't have a lot of parking spots there. And so.
I'll just chime in, there, there is an ORS, you cannot park in that. City would not have to adopt an ordinance, there's already a state rule.
It's pretty close to the police station too, isn't it?
Can we have that, we have that posted somewhere or? Do people post that, that ORS on a signage near those areas? I don't know.
I think the ones at Fred Meyer have a posting that says, like a little, it says, it says, "Councillor Brandon Lesowski cannot park here."
Say electric vehicle parking only.
I did a lot in the EV.
I would have a question though.
Oh, I have recognized, Council President. Go ahead, you can still talk, once the motion's made.
Okay. No, I want you to go.
I would just be curious to know with the PUD install, or the PUD parking chargers, vast majority of all other brands and models that are EVs that could utilize your particular charging station, correct? So Orprey's, you know, Chevy has one or Five Out, you know, all these other companies. Because my understanding is all the charging portals are very much unique to the model or the make of the vehicle. And so just getting universal charging would be a step in the right direction rather than, and Tesla has a huge portion of the market. But not everyone has a Tesla either.
There are adapters.
Yeah, so there's, there's two specific adapters on the, the ChargePoint brand and that's the ones that the PUD was going to install. And those can charge a huge array of vehicles. I can't say the majority, I mean, definitely the majority, but I can't say like all vehicles. But even Tesla, you can charge on those with an adapter that Tesla would supply. So that the two main, like, popular things are supplied by the ChargePoint.
Fantastic, yeah, thank you.
And there's rumor that Tesla is going to open up for other brands as well. Believe it's actually been announced, I don't know if it's just rumor or not.
See when we get there. Council President?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve the proposed location for electric vehicle chargers and direct staff to proceed with drafting agreements with both the Columbia River PUD and Tesla Incorporated for the purpose of constructing electric vehicle charging stations near the water.
Hearing a motion by Council President Grayson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Lesowski. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number nine, street light upgrades.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I can't speak to it necessarily, but in 2017, when I arrived at the city in public work, we put a large emphasis on to street light improvement. Several outages, there were lights that were extremely inefficient, there were some that were hazardous. So we've been addressing those, currently we're pretty exclusively on these projects actually to replace all of those, which is now done. And now what we're looking to do is work on energy management efficiency for the city moving forward. And as we sat down between city and PUD staff or two ago and started talking about what options we have for these scenarios, PUD went to work and they came up with some different scenarios and research. And it was presented to us that right now the rebates are extremely good. And we would like to, to you to see if we could capitalize on that. Right now with the rebates, you basically could get almost a third of the cost covered of the infrastructure itself to do a citywide LED light replacement. Remaining high-pressure sodiums that are within the system ultimately be replaced with modern-day LED, which as we all know, improve light efficiency and safety, there's better lighting patterns for people to see. And, and long-term for maintenance, right now, I think we're getting probably four to five calls a week on lights that are out for the high-pressure sodiums, the LEDs are less fail. Would save us quite a bit of money in our maintenance costs. Now for this year, we have 24,000 budgeted. That, that's a, that's a good portion of these lights, be budgeting every year just for the maintenance and repairs of them. So our ask to you is to approve doing a citywide street light replacement this year. Our budget for the year was $50,000 in capital. We've looked against contingency, there's adequate funds in the contingency to cover this. For the year, we've worked with the finance administrator and she's verified funding is, is sufficiently adequate this year, so. I can discuss anything regarding the efficiency of the lights or technical data or Carl. It's not my world to fully, I mean, I get it. Technically, I'll let them speak on that. If you have any questions.
Any questions?
Just to clarify or to make public, when we say that it's funded by the city's street budget, where does that money come from?
That is the, is the, refund in whole is gas tax, Oregon State gas tax. As you know, we have our local gas tax, which that is being used for the sidewalk work. This is coming out of our state gas tax revenue.
Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move that council authorize interim city manager reins to enter into agreement with the Columbia River PUD, what? Oh, sorry. I was just reading. With city manager reign, sorry, I didn't even think, to enter into agreement with Columbia River PUD for the purpose of LED street lighting upgrades. You could write anything, no, I'm just joking.
Motion by Council President Grayson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Lesowski, any discussion? Second by Councilor Lesowski, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries, assistant manager, oh wait. All right, calendar. Our next council meeting will be Monday, November fifteenth, work session at six P M, council meeting at seven. City will be closed on the eleventh in honor of Veterans Day. Economic Development Committee is at noon on the eighteenth, Park and Rex Committee meeting is at eight, six P M on the eighteenth with the Planning Commission meeting hour later at seven P M on the eighteenth. Offices will also be closed on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth for Thanksgiving. Alex, do you have anything?
I just wanted to point out that I've tentatively circled February twelfth for a council retreat, so just let me know if that works for you all.
Sorry.
Yes, February twelfth. And then we had a really nice Halloween event this weekend, saw some of the counselors there. We handed out about a hundred bags and I just want to thank all of the members of staff who came and participated in that.
I would just like to point out you're not the third richest city in the state of Oregon. Your, the most recent data that I was able to find where you're, you had assets of five hundred total assessed, five eighty-one, six twenty-three, one thirty-three. It's about the same size as Malala. Your permanent tax rate is three dollars and twenty-three cents. Malala's is five hundred forty-three cents. So you're actually forty percent below similarly sized, many similarly sized jurisdictions. Vernonia's at five dollars and eighty-two cents in permanent tax rate, so you're well below that. So it would be absolutely wonderful if we had a ton of money around so that we could do parks and other exciting projects like the city of Lake Oswego, but the city of Lake Oswego has eight point two five billion in assets. So about sixteen times what we have and a permanent tax rate that's higher too. And so I would just, obviously you get money other than property taxes, but I think that there's a lot of misinformation up there. And people need to be realistic about the revenue that the city receives and how that can be spent. And so I hope that that could be done. And I hope that this perception of you guys being the third richest city in the state of Oregon could be corrected. It would be wonderful if that was true, but it's not.
I just wanted to say and thank all the city staff for Halloween and Timmy Sue for, and all organized. It was a good turnout.
Anything, Dave? Counselor Polling, do you have anything?
Uh, no, just, I was happy to see everybody at the Halloween drive-through. It was nice seeing staff there. Other than that, it was actually beautiful weather, so. That's it.
Counselor Miller, have anything?
I just wanted to thank city staff and Timmy Sue for putting together an amazing package for my kids. Top-notch bags and it was great to see so many staff members there. Thank you. I hadn't been in ages, but I went to the homecoming football game with our city manager on Friday, so that was kind of fun to get all happen again.
Counselor Hoggan?
Did we win?
Oh, we blew them out of the water.
I just want to thank the initiative of, of Dave and city staff, a number of overtures from the charging stations to Christmas decorations and, and the annual dance. So I, 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 I think we all appreciate that.
I too was at the homecoming game against our foes to, I guess it's the north, St. Helens this last Friday. I want to also say, I didn't have an opportunity to speak with you there, city manager reins. But just having your presence in the community events meant a lot to me. I know this is a somewhat of a new role for you, a new title we'll say. But I appreciate you getting out there and engaging with folks. And so hope you had a good time, hope it wasn't too cold. It was kind of cold.
Kind of chilly.
Well, chilly, yeah.
Aluminum bench.
Yeah, those benches will get you. The bad days are down.
But besides that, at least in my neighborhood, I had the opportunity to go out with my children and it was just nice to see how many folks were out and about and it just felt like our community was alive on Sunday in the sense of celebration of Halloween, which is, isn't usually always about celebrating life. But it was nice. It's nice to see that folks are out and enjoying each other and being safe and all in the same respect. So, thank you.
Counselor McKeon?
I just want to say how much I appreciate Alex being at our homecoming games the other day, except they took me by surprise. I thought, I was surrounded by some high school kids and they said, you know, hi, and I turned around, I thought it's a couple of high school girls. But a second look, you know, no, it was really great seeing them there. So, you know, that's the kind of thing we like to see and we appreciate that happening. I'd also like to say that, thanks Dave for all you're doing. You do a lot of stuff and take on initiative like Joel's already mentioned that is above and beyond. We appreciate you doing that. And that's it.
All right, I'm going to wrap it up with no comments tonight because it's ten o'clock. Meeting adjourned.